Who's missing? Where's Joan? Well, we'll start anyway. So I'm going to call the meeting to order. The first item on the agenda always is citizens' concerns, which is an opportunity for people to bring up briefly issues that are not on our agenda. Yes?
Tara Fredericks, West Acton. First of all, I'd like to make note that there are 15 town vehicles in parking spaces not being used. The vehicles are not being used. They're parked cold tonight while people are trying to use those parking spaces. So just reporting. My first item is a question. I had earlier asked for the letters for who had written in for tree clearing, excuse me, the tree preservation bylaw, and I hadn't got an answer on that yet, so hoping for an answer when those are going to get posted.
I'm not going to give you an answer right now, but we can look into it.
Thank you.
All right? Next?
Okay. The 40B manual that was presented to the zoning board of appeals in the last, an earlier meeting about a month ago, did not include very important Acton 2020 goals, including carbon footprint as well as historic inventory protections, state law regarding respecting our local demo delay. And so I also had asked about this about a month ago and was waiting for an answer on when the manual was going to get revised to include these things.
Have you ever submitted any of these things in writing?
Yes.
To the appropriate boards, for example, the zoning board of appeals?
Absolutely.
And you've gotten no response?
No response.
Because it would really be helpful when you have a long view list of issues to bring up if you documented them in writing to us, because then we can share them and put the questionable force of our authority behind them in asking people to look into them.
Yes, I have, absolutely. I don't bring anything here.
Especially because you've said that you've brought these up before and you've not gotten an answer.
Yes.
I just wondered in what form you brought the issues up?
Emails.
Were they buried, buried in a laundry list of?
No. Each one has gotten a separate email to the appropriate board that has been ignored at least three times, so I don't come here.
Okay. So I've written down, okay, I've written down the 40B manual. I've got the tree protection bylaw, and I've got the first thing about cars in the parking lot. What else?
The next thing is-
Briefly.
Yes, the security cameras that have been placed in the library. I'd like to know also where other security cameras are being placed or have been placed, and I asked that at the last citizens' concerns. And that also, you had taken note, and there was no response on that. And my last three things are just a reminder, actually, one's a reminder. You had said a West Acton parking hearing. You had said that you would schedule that soon, and so hoping for that.
I, well, I think that you had brought it up out of context, because it wasn't on our agenda, and you were sort of arguing with somebody else, I think it was our former selectman, about West Acton parking, which was not on the agenda at all. And I said that would have to be taken up at a separate meeting at some point in the future. I didn't say that we were going to schedule it because it's, we have a lot of other things to deal with, so.
Yes.
And I have no idea. If we're going to schedule it, I don't have a date certain, so.
Thank you, because when I had brought this up at a citizens' concern, which is where I thought citizens' concerns would go, you had said that you would, you had heard from other people that this was a concern and that you would schedule it, so hopefully that that will happen. I'll continue to bring that up. The last question is a sidewalk priority setting. Apparently, the sidewalk committee is not using the actual metrics that are used or done in an open meeting, but setting priorities, and they're setting them based on the way they feel like they want to have inside. I don't know if this is true. It's just a report, and so I would like to know if anybody knows.
Your question is what?
The question is, is as the board of selectmen, as the authority of the sidewalk committee, have you told them to use the priority-setting process that has been developed in open meeting law or open meeting, or have you allowed them to do whatever they like?
I think that they have a certain amount of authority delegated from us to determine the appropriate standards. If we tried to tell people, all the committees, exactly what to do, we'd never be able to do anything else, so.
Thank you.
They have more expertise, frankly, because they're dealing with that specialized area than we do, and so we tend to trust them to apply appropriate standards, so.
Yes, I've noticed that several selectmen have been quite forthright in their opinions about how the committees should be run, and so I was wondering if you had set specific, specifics for them. I'll investigate and come back on that. But my last concern may be brought up later, because it was about the sustainability plan, which I couldn't attend on the fifth, the meeting of the fifth. And I would like very much to ensure that we address growth, because just one house adds about 10 tons a year, including cars, et cetera, so at 80 permits per year, it's about 800 tons a year that are within our carbon authority to say no to.
Okay, that's on the agenda, so you should have saved that comment for then. Thank you. Anybody else?
Good afternoon. My name is Bob Miller, 84 Windsor Avenue. I just wanted to be sure that I understood that the subject of the monopoles would be something that citizen input could be taken later?
Yes, it's on our agenda. If you have a, I don't know if the agendas are at the deficit.
I do, but I wasn't quite clear on the process.
Yeah, well, that's why it's on the agendas, because we're wanting to talk about the things that typically are not discussed are on the consent agenda.
Okay, but then there'll be an opportunity for citizen input at that point.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you. Anybody else? All right. Let me find my, this is, I should mention, first of all, that our town manager and our colleague Peter Berry are on vacation, the nerve of them, but I hope they're enjoying it this week. So in, in the place of the town manager, we have our assistant town manager, Mark Hall, who is, has the unwelcome task of trying to keep us all in order and straighten now, but welcome, Mark, and I hope you enjoy it as much as the town manager does. So first, the next item is chairman's update. I just told you that there are two people absent tonight, and Mark is here. Acton's celebration of the Fourth was on the First, another big success. Thanks and kudos again to town staff and the many volunteers and the weather gods. Special thanks to the recreation director Kathy Fochman and rec. department event and program director Laura Haberman, and a shout out to the natural resources director Tom Tedman for once again ably manning the snack bar grill. There was a specially scheduled executive session of the board of selectmen on Monday, July 3rd, regarding Nagakpon, basically to update members about the settlement negotiations to date. Settlement discussions have been occurring pretty much weekly. They resumed next, late next week and continuing the following week with the board probably going to have another executive session in between prior to our regular July 24th meeting. It will start at 5:30. That's a warning to everybody here. Yes. There's going to be a consumer information session. It just got posted on the town website, offered by representatives of the Mass Office of Consumer Affairs and Business Regulations, Tuesday, July 18, from 11 to 1 at the Acton TV studio, Swiss 168 Craig Road. You have an opportunity to learn what the Office of Consumer Affairs does to protect consumers in various areas, whether insurance policies, cable and phone bills, renters' rights, and professional licenses and the like. It's open to public, free of charge, and there's more info, as information, as I said, on the town website. One last item I just mentioned briefly. I've been working with our executive assistant Lisa Toma on the possible revival of the tradition of recognizing the eldest citizen in town by awarding something called the Boston Post cane. Acton still has its cane. It's in the safekeeping of the town clerk, and I think there it will remain, because it has wandered off and sometimes not come back to us right away. Boston Post cane originated as a publicity stunt in 1909 by the publisher of the Boston Post newspaper. Boards of selectmen in 700 towns in Maine, Massachusetts, New Hampshire, and Rhode Island received canes made of ebony from the Congo with two-inch caps of 14-karat gold decorated and hand engraved with the legend, presented by the Boston Post to the oldest citizen of, named the town and the state, to be transmitted, meaning that the board was responsible for giving the cane to the oldest citizen in the town. Very handsome pieces. I've seen some photographs. And the idea was back then, this is 1909, the eldest citizen was to hold on to the cane for as long as the title fit, and the cane would then pass to the successor. Initially, only men were eligible. Women became eligible in 1930, reportedly after substantial controversy. But in any event, this public relations stunt must have worked, because the Boston Post was at one point the country's leading standard-sized newspaper before it eventually folded in 1957. In the meantime, not surprisingly, many canes were lost, stolen, or destroyed over the decades, and that could have happened to Acton. The most recent Acton ceremony was in 2008, where there was a presentation by Lauren Rosenzweig-Morton. Fortunately, the family of the recipient came across the cane among the recipient's belongings and returned it to the town. As I said, it's in the custody of the town clerk, and the revived ceremony probably will entail the town's keeping custody of the cane, bringing it out for ceremonial purposes, but then recognizing recipients with some sort of plaque or maybe a pin. The Town of Maynard has a whole history. There's somebody there who's very into this, so if you go to the Town of Maynard website, or I think it's web.maynard.mass.us, there's a whole lot of history about the Boston Post cane. And finally, town manager contract will be on a future agenda. We need to finalize the terms of the contract, probably at our next meeting on July 24th. We also have an appointment with proponents of another medical marijuana dispensary. And the Powder Mill Chapter 40B project, which had been listed for July 24th, won't be on the July 24th agenda, will be on a future agenda. Mr. Assistant Town Manager.
Thank you. Just a few items. Just wanted to let the board know that the fire department took delivery of a new engine that was authorized at the 2016 annual town meeting. The department is currently training on that apparatus, and it should be in service by the end of this week. The advanced life support program, it's, we're ready to start, but there's been some retirements at the state level, so we're, we need their sign-off, so we're working with that staff to get that done. The chief should be able to advise you at the board's 24th, July 24th meeting. And also at that meeting, a consultant will be presenting his findings and recommendations on the condition and location of our fire stations, along with the chief. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. That was very good for your debut, but I'm looking forward to that presentation about the fire safety analysis. So first item on our agenda today is 7:10 hearing. Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138 of the general laws that the board of selectmen will hold a hearing in the Francis Faulkner Room in the Acton Town Hall on July 10, 2017, at 7:10 PM on the application of indoor sports management. Change in manager to Justin Sensabaugh, I hope I'm pronouncing that right, for an all-alcohol license as a common victual or a 305 Main Street Acton. Application is on file in the selectmen's office and may be viewed during normal working hours. Is there somebody here for indoor sports management? Yes. If you, you can, you have a choice. You can stand at this mic, or you can sit at those mics, but, and the mic is on, so.
Sure.
Sure, go ahead and introduce yourself and just, we, it's pretty self-explanatory, but go ahead.
My name is Justin Sensabaugh. I'm from Medford, Massachusetts. I work at Teamworks down the road. I am going to take over the bar at the indoor sports complex that we have. I worked in restaurants for a while, got my master's degree in sports management. Before that, I got a degree in hospitality and tourism management at UMass Amherst.
All right. I think that's probably enough. Board, any questions? Katie?
I said one, I just want to confirm. So you have never been the manager of an establishment with a liquor license before, correct?
Yes, I was a manager of Not Your Average Joe's, and that was in Beverly, Massachusetts.
Okay.
I did that after I graduated from UMass Amherst.
Okay, so you have been a manager with a liquor license before and overseeing sort of that in staff and serving policies?
Absolutely.
Okay, great, excellent. Well, thank you very much, and congratulations on the new role.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the audience? Yes. You should be sitting closer to the mic. We need a hand, we need the handheld mic, actually. It's summertime, you're-
I have no shoes. Deborah Symes, Concord Road. I'm just wondering where this place is. I don't know what this place is.
Teamworks, and there's a bar inside on Great Road.
Oh, I thought, I looked up the address, and it said it was on 27, so now I'm better.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the audience? All right. Do we have a motion to?
Motion to approve the change in management.
Second?
Katie Moose in Chingsung Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? You're in.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And 7:15 PM, wearestillin.com requests for a pledge of support of Paris Climate Control. Now, I know there's a lot of people interested in this, but is there somebody, Mr. Joris?
Yes.
Yes, hi.
Hi.
I know you had, you wanted to have a little presentation, so we gave you a little time.
Thank you. Yeah, well, in fact, I'm there. Members of the board, my name is Yoris Wills. I'm in School Street. I'm the leader of Indivisible Acton, a chapter of Indivisible that is committed to progressive policies and nonviolent resistance to the regression in Washington. I'm joined here by our active organizer Monica Burke, many of our members, our sister organization, the Activist Alliance, led by Kristin Smith-Park, and the Acton Chapter of Mothers Out Front, led by Jude Arenstein. Shortly after our president withdrew from the Paris Climate Accord, hundreds of cities, including many from Massachusetts and many states, including our own, pledged that they would support the accord. It is local government which realizes the accord anyway. We wish Acton to join these brave municipalities, which include Boston, Cambridge, Somerville, and Lexington, and many more from our state. There are two related ways, and we wish Acton to join both. Details on both are in your packet. ClimateMayors.org is focused on municipalities, and it is led by the mayor of Los Angeles. They provide draft resolution language, suggested actions, and a monthly conference call. WeAreStillIn.com is a website in which cities, states, companies, and institutions of higher and learning openly declare their support. Only a non-binding pledge of support is required to join these groups. The pledge is a moral, not legal, declaration to achieve the accord's goals. The accord's goals are consistent with those of our state's 2008 Climate Act, and making a pledge would be a great way for Acton to publicly stand by its environmental goals for this year. Members of our, of these groups, please raise your hands, so we can see who all is here. Thank you. We also bring about 50 letters from town residents who could not be here, a letter in support from Green Acton. We've had two articles in the paper, and I think The Beacon is here today. I like the time to argue why this pledge is significant and beneficial, but rest to say that the whole world is taking notice of the stand being taken by these states, cities, and towns. Governor Brown was in Hamburg during the G20 conference, speaking to the climate conference. The G19 declared the court irreversible, leaving Trump on the cold. They take heart from our courage and persistence. They see that Washington's shortsighted actions are but a blip, and that we will prevail. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh, you have more speakers?
Yes.
Okay.
Hello, everyone. I'm Kristin Smith-Park, and I'm the founder of the Activist Alliance, and I just wanted to sort of reiterate what Joris said and, and tell you sort of where we're coming from, the Activist Alliance, where we're coming from. As a representative of a local activist group, Activist Alliance, we urge the BOS to continue to support the Paris Climate Accord. Part of the Activist Alliance mission is to, quote, "Take consistent, specific, local, state, and national peaceful and nonviolent action so that our national, natural environment will be protected for future generations." We feel strongly that the Paris Climate Accord is a crucial, historic, worldwide step to protecting our environment by keeping global temperatures well below 2 degrees Celsius and by reducing greenhouse gases produced by human activity. While mainly symbolic, pledging to uphold the accord shows the world that the residents of the Town of Acton understand the moral responsibility we have to protect our environment for our sakes as well as for our children's. Even though the United States President felt that it was okay to pull out of the accord, we want to show that the people of the United States do not. We hope that Acton will be one of the many towns to pledge to uphold the Paris Climate Accord. Thanks.
Tara Fredericks, West Acton. I am in support of endorsing this, but I want to make note that even if we comply with the Paris Accords and everybody else on the planet abides by the Paris Accords, it's not enough. It's not even close to enough. We're in a climate crisis. We have the carbon authority under our town to do our part, and I think that, well, this is a good symbolic move, and I'm really glad that people are getting up and rising up and coming forward. We've got a lot of work to do, and I see this as symbolic and a good thing. I don't want to poo-poo this, but it's not, it doesn't, it doesn't do nearly enough. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Jude Arenstein, 3 Gregory Lane in Acton. I'm the current coordinator of Mothers Out Front Acton, and first I have to say that the important piece that, why I'm here, is that I have three kids. And Mothers Out Front has really given me the platform and the support to raise my voice and the voices of other mothers and caregivers. Our mission is really to build the political will, to get our elected officials to take bold action. And I think this, as people have said, is symbolic, but I think that it's extremely important that we stand up and say, this is an important thing that we want our country to do, and that the surrounding towns and all the towns throughout the country want to find a way for clean and sustainable energy. Thank you.
Hello. Danny Factor, 11 Davis Road, number 85. I am the co-chair of the local Green Party chapter, and I'm also one of the directors of Green Acton, but I speak today as a private citizen in support of this resolution. I think you should vote to support this and the Paris Accords, because by doing so, what Acton would be doing, what this board would be doing, is making a statement that the climate emergency affects each and every town, hill, valley, and person in the world. And the only way to fight climate change is for every small community to take a stand, and this is a good first step for this town. Second, I also want to say that we have to even call for more than what the Paris Accords says. If you're familiar enough with the Paris Accords, you know that it is a voluntary agreement, and that what we really should be doing is supporting this and also calling for a legally enforceable binding agreement, because even if all the countries were to follow Paris, if the United States were to reverse its current position, it is questionable whether even keeping the obligations of Paris, we will be able to keep climate change, the warming, below 3 degrees. And the UN Climate Conference has recommended that any agreement should keep the warming below 2 degrees, and this is a crucial difference. We should actually be supporting this resolution and also calling for a binding resolution to keep global warming under 1.5 degrees. And that's going to mean a bold transition to renewable energy. So what I'm asking the board to do, first of all, is say yes to this proposal. Second, consider language to say that we can and should go further, calling for a binding treaty with stricter requirements. Third, as far as what we can do in town, there have been two wonderful initiatives being talked about by town government. One is an initiative that the Green Advisory Board has been talking about for a plan to minimize carbon use in town. The board of selectmen should support that. And lastly, there's also been talk about finally Acton coming up with a town sustainability plan, like other towns in Massachusetts have done so, and the board of selectmen needs to support that for our future. And it should include language that explains that the climate crisis is, in fact, an emergency. Many people think of climate change, even those who believe in it, people who understand the science, think that this is something that is only going to affect people who live on the coasts. The truth of the matter is, is that when the real effects of climate change hit, it will have a tremendous effect on our food supply and affects anyone regardless where they're living in the world. So I beg of you to please consider this a dire emergency and take action that is recommended. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I would just add, Danny, that actually, as far as local initiatives are concerned, the Green Advisory Board will be at our next meeting presenting, and the top, the board of selectmen's 2017 goals, short-term and long-term, deal with sustainability. And in fact, Katie is going to talk a little bit about what she and another, a group have outlined for us to start moving forward for the, on that, so anyhow. Just wanted to let you know that we actually have, there actually is support, you don't have to ask us to support some of these things, especially our own goals. We typically support our own goals, so anyhow, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Benson. I'm the state rep for half of Acton. I am not a resident, so I am not here to ask you to vote any specific way. I am here, first of all, to thank you and the town for being such a leader in environmental policy and activism. So often in my tenure, my fifth term now, in the State House, I've been so proud to represent Acton in all the work that you've already done. But I'm also here to say that this does matter, and granted, as others have said, it's not enough, but it is symbolic in a very real way. I've been asked to go to Bonn in November to represent the United States at the Paris Talks, and I'm very proud to do that. And it's not that I have a voting, a vote to offer or necessarily grounds to stand on as the leader of the United States, which I am certainly not, but I am going to say that many of us here in the United States and here in Massachusetts do believe that this is not only an issue, but an emergency. And for the United States, the leader of the free world has been our historic role, to remove ourselves from this conversation is not only inappropriate but unacceptable. So- and also calling for a binding resolution to keep global warming under 1.5 degrees. And that's going to mean a bold transition to renewable energy. So what I'm asking the board to do, first of all, is say yes to this proposal. Second, consider language to say that we can and should go further, calling for a binding treaty with stricter requirements. Third, as far as what we can do in town, there have been two wonderful initiatives being talked about by town government. One is an initiative that the Green Advisory Board has been talking about for a plan to minimize carbon use in town. The Board of Selectmen should support that. And lastly, there's also been talk about finally Acton coming up with a town sustainability plan, like other towns in Massachusetts have done so. And the Board of Selectmen needs to support that for our future. And it should include language that explains that the climate crisis is, in fact, an emergency. Many people think of climate change, even those who believe in it, people who understand the science, think that this is something that is only going to affect people who live on the coast. The truth of the matter is, is that when the real effects of climate change hit, it will have a tremendous effect on our food supply and affects anyone regardless where they're living in the world. So I beg of you to please consider this a dire emergency and take action that is recommended. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I would just add, Danny, that actually, as far as local initiatives are concerned, the Green Advisory Board will be at our next meeting presenting. And the top, the Board of Selectmen's 2017 goals, short-term and long-term, deal with sustainability. And in fact, Katie is going to talk a little bit about what she and another, a group have outlined for us to start moving forward for that, on that. So anyhow. Just wanted to let you know that we actually have, there actually is support. You don't have to ask us to support some of these things, especially our own goals. We typically support our own goals. So anyhow, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name's Jennifer Benson. I'm the state rep for half of Acton. I am not a resident, so I am not here to ask you to vote any specific way. I'm here, first of all, to thank you and the town for being such a leader in environmental policy and activism. So often in my tenure, my fifth term now in the State House, I've been so proud to represent Acton in all the work that you've already done. But I'm also here to say that this does matter. And granted, as others have said, it's not enough, but it is symbolic in a very real way. I've been asked to go to Bonn in November to represent the United States at the Paris talks, and I'm very proud to do that. And it's not that I have a voting, a vote to offer or necessarily grounds to stand on as the leader of the United States, which I am certainly not. But I am going to say that many of us here in the United States and here in Massachusetts do believe that this is not only an issue, but an emergency. And for the United States, the leader of the free world has been our historic role, to remove ourselves from this conversation is not only inappropriate but unacceptable. So you're adding your voice and the Town of Acton's voice to this discussion, I think matters not only to me and to the people in the State House and to the people of this town, but it matters to the people of the United States, because we are taking control. We are voicing our opinion. And just as I have filed legislation, including carbon pricing legislation here in Massachusetts, Massachusetts has taken a role of leadership in the country around lots of issues, and this is certainly one of them. So thank you for considering this. I look forward to hearing your decision. And thanks for your time.
Thank you, Representative Benson. Honored to have you here. Anybody else? I think we're going to, I'm going to turn back to the board and ask if the board has comments. Katie?
Sure. I just wanted to thank you all for bringing this sort of opportunity to our attention. As Janet mentioned, the implementing sustainability policy was the Selectmen's number-one short-term goal for this year. And I think a lot of us in voting for that felt that it encompassed a lot of issues, including addressing climate change. So I think this fits in well with what we've already noted as one of our main goals for this year. My only question is, you know, we've heard about a lot of cities that have adopted this and city councils or mayors. My question is about towns that have adopted it. And have you found that towns have done this by votes of the Board of Selectmen? Or have you considered, or have other towns brought resolutions before their town meetings? I think there's value in doing things both ways, but I'm just wondering what the experience is in other Massachusetts communities.
We just also recently noticed that Lexington joined. I actually don't know what process they went through. I couldn't find their minutes anywhere.
Yeah.
But I figured that since this was a non-binding resolution, it wasn't committing the town to anything, it probably wouldn't need town meeting to do it.
No, it probably wouldn't need it. I think it's just a matter of, and I think, again, there's value in the going quickly and having the board. And, you know, I'm very supportive of this and would be happy to vote tonight to adopt this or commit to signing, though we're still in pledge. But I think it might be still worthwhile as well to consider going forward with a town meeting, non-binding resolution, because I think it's a stronger statement from the entire community then as well.
I agree. I mean, you could, right now Lexington is listed as, you know, as the Board of Selectmen. And you could literally change that in six months to being a town meeting or something more stronger.
Right. Okay, great. Excellent. Thank you very much. And so, again, I'm supportive of this.
Before there are further comments from the board, I need to read a notice. It's, "The Acton Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on July 10, 2017, at 7:30 p.m. Continued from June 19, 2017, in the Francis Faulkner Hearing Room, 204 at the Town Hall, 472 Main Street, Acton, on the application of AHO Development Corp. for a site plan special permit 5- slash 4/17-467, under zoning by law, section 10.4, at 533 Main Street, Acton. The applicant proposes to expand the existing building. The application and accompanying plans can be inspected at the Planning Department in Town Hall during normal business hours." So now we will go resume discussion of the Paris Accord, and then we'll pick up the hearing. But as a legal matter, I have to read these notices when they're posted. So, thank you. Any other board members? Joan, you have something to say?
Well, the template resolution, we should change it from City Council to Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, I, you know, I have to admit, I don't think I read all of this material closely. So, yeah, sure, for sure, we have to modify. But I think it's the other things, the substance of the commitment. And one, whether everybody in the board is comfortable with our, the boards going forward into signing it, or whether we want to do our own thing, or what.
No, I support it. I just want to make sure that we're...
So there's both the template, the council resolution that's from the Climate Mayors Organization, and there's also the pledge to sign from the WeAreStillIn. So I think we also need to talk about whether we're doing one or both at this time.
I don't really see an issue for doing both. I mean, they were very similar as far as I was concerned, so.
Okay, so, and I, you know, I'm, I'm fine with this, because it's, it is symbolic. And I happen, although sometimes I don't take positions on issues that I perceive as being sort of federal or international or something. This is an issue where I frankly am so angry about what's happening that I, I support this, you know. Just, yeah, I've been doing a lot of screaming via email and other, and other media, so. But the issue of, well, and I think that frankly, if they're, if they're not mutually exclusive or they're not inconsistent, do you have a, I mean, you're, you're the sustainability...
No, no, I think they're both good. I just wanted to make sure we were, we knew we were talking about two things.
We were aware that, yeah.
Right. So I'm happy to make a motion then to move that the Board of Selectmen sign that WeAreStillIn.com pledge to support the Paris Climate Agreement and that we adopt the council resolution, or that we adopt the resolution from the Climate Mayors Organization.
Katie moves, and Joan seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Now we have to do something. Well, thank you, thank you very much for coming here to voice your support and sending emails to us as well. I think this is an issue in which perhaps there's almost universal, not universal. I better not say universal, because obviously isn't, I don't understand it. I mean, a good portion of the public believes in this, this, the importance of this, so. At least, well, maybe I'm, I'm really limiting my exposure to the part of the public that believes in this, and I'm more blinded than I thought I was. But anyhow, thank you very much. And so now we have 533 Main Street. I thought I saw them earlier. Oh, okay, there you are. Okay. Oh. You're, you're hard to see among the crowd. We're not used to having this many people, so.
Can I give this to Lisa? It's the 50 written testimonies?
Okay, yeah. That'd be great. Thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm William Hall with Stamp Team Mary. With me is Sven Heisted. He's the architect that was working on this project. As you'll remember, we had a hearing at the last meeting, last month, I believe it was June 19th, that was continued to address some concerns, both from staff and from the meeting that we had. And we've been working diligently since then to address these concerns. So we've come back with a slightly altered layout. Most of it is altered with this building 10 in this area. As you'll remember, previously was back further towards the Isaac Davis Trail, which is located here. It's been pushed across closer to the existing building. And shrinking that allowed us to clear up a few concerns. First, it cleared up a concern with the Isaac Davis Trail. Second, it cleared up the concern with the water district, because now the water line runs alongside it, in between the buildings, and no longer underneath. And third, the power company actually started relocating some of the utility poles. And one of them was going to be running directly over the building, so it helped clear up that concern as well. Sven went to DRB on the July 5th meeting, and they generally liked the proposal. And one change that we had from them was there's a split now between Buildings 2 and 3. And also, there's going to be larger trees from the landscape plan, which is actually... So these were proposed to be seven to eight feet tall, and now they're going to be 10 to 12-foot-tall evergreens in that area instead. The rest of the concerns from the Planning Department memo have been addressed, and the engineering memo. And Sven could speak more to the Design Review Board, but it's my understanding that that's all been addressed as well. The last thing that we would like to talk about would be the contribution to the sidewalk fund. Sven has authorization from the applicant to talk to that. So I'll let him take over now.
Thank you, Bill. Just quickly, we did have a nice follow-up meeting with the DRB there last week. And they were appreciative of the changes we made from the first meeting. And as a result of that, basically, they had kind of the two concerns. And one was opening up the two buildings there between 2 and 3 to make a break, so there wasn't one big, long building along the road there. And then also increasing those trees, the height of the trees, to make a better screen there, which Bill mentioned. So we're fine with both of those. And I think moving Building 10 and kind of killed three birds with one stone. So that was a nice, that was a nice move. It did get a bit smaller, but it worked just fine for us. So, so that was good. I think we're, I think we're in good shape there. In terms of the sidewalk end of things, we did do an analysis. Got a quote from a contractor about the cost of putting in a sidewalk. In this case, there is a sidewalk across the street that's relatively rarely used. It's not a huge pedestrian passageway. And we would suggest that it's probably not really the best use of money to go build another one on this side of the sidewalk, this side of the street, although that is an option if we need to, or it is part of the proposal that you require a sidewalk or a contribution. So we're okay, kind of, either way. We'd really kind of prefer, I think, it'd be smarter to make the contribution to the fund rather than, because you can put a sidewalk somewhere else, maybe that would get better use than, than the one here in front of the building. We did do it. We got a quote from Olson Pipe Company that did a detailed breakdown on the work there and came up with approximately $12,000 for, for the sidewalk. We also did a comparison by RS means of a similar specification sidewalk and came up with about $11,000 and change. So somewhere in that neighborhood of 11 and 12 seems to be the, the cost number to put it in. So the developer authorized, basically, he'd like to make, suggest to make the contribution for the $12,000 to the fund and put the money towards another, whatever project you'd like to put it towards. Thank you.
Comments, questions from the board?
Well, the standard for the sidewalk would be $50 a foot, which would bring it to $33,000. And this is $12,000. So I think the, most of the proposal has been met, but it will be up to the board to decide what to do about that.
And I think we, we had a statement filed by the sidewalk, or somebody representing the sidewalk committee saying, explaining the basis for the calculation that the committee uses for determining the value for contribution purposes. And they, the sidewalk committee is not keen on granting discounts without good reason. So the question is, is this good reason? I mean, I don't know if this 11, $12,000 quote reflects the prevailing wage standard that the town has to use when they're talking about the cost of labor for installing sidewalks, or if it's...
No.
Probably not, right? And, and I think that that's, you know, that's the issue when you have a contribution to the sidewalk fund. We're not going to, we have to abide by the prevailing wage. So $11,000 to $12,000 isn't going to get us the full linear footage that the much bigger quote would, that, that our engineering department and the sidewalk committee supports. So that's the dilemma we have, is that I think we probably could see our way clear to not requiring another sidewalk, where there isn't really one needed. But the question of contribution is, I think we agree on contribution probably being wiser. The question is the calculation. And that's the dilemma I see from our perspective with the lower number, is that it, it suits, it meets your needs, but it, at some point, when we're going, using the fund to install sidewalks, we're paying an hourly rate that's higher than what that's, so we're going to get less sidewalk.
I just want to speak quickly about the $50 a foot rate. There's a lot, it's kind of, in some cases, it's kind of like cars. You know, you can buy a car for $12,000, you can buy a car for $112,000, and you still got four tires and engine, four doors, and you move. In this case, when you, when you do sidewalks, there's a lot of different parameters that could be included. You could have tree clearing, you could have grading involved, you could have other, there's other pieces of the puzzle that may be included in some sidewalks, but not other sidewalks. And in my opinion, the, the rate that the city's used kind of is a cover everything sort of worst-case scenario really for sidewalk costs. And in this case, we've got a sidewalk that doesn't require some of those things. And we're also dealing with, you know, private contractors rather than the prevailing wage. So it's, it's, it's an easier version, you know. It's, some sidewalks are easier to build than other ones, I guess is what I'm saying. So in this case, we have a pretty easy, a pretty easy one.
Mr. Assistant Town Manager, I, I know that we were communicating about this issue, and I know you had some information that you had dug up, sort of, about the range of cost of sidewalk.
We looked back at some emails from the town engineer, and over the past few years, there's been a range of estimates from $50 to $187 a linear foot, I believe was the highest that we had found. It, like you said, it depends on the site issues, clearings, tree clearings, ledge issues, that kind of thing. So we do have experience with quite a range of, of costs.
But not typically lower than $15 a linear foot, probably. That's the low point for us. Katie?
Go ahead.
No, Joan?
Well, I said two quick questions. One, I wanted to make sure, I think you noted in here, but I just want to confirm for the public that the bicycle parking was added to the plan. Could you just point where that's going to be?
Yes, so it's actually going to be in this area next to the main entrance.
Okay, great. Excellent. Thank you. And then, yeah, in terms of the sidewalk, I guess my question is, it seems like you're saying you might go ahead and just build that other sidewalk if we don't accept the kind of lower contribution agreement. And I think that's where we run into these issues, is because you can technically build another sidewalk. It's just all of us agree it's not a fruitful use of anybody's time or, or money. You know, I think, again, as Jenna and Joan and Mark pointed out, and, you know, unfortunately, it costs a lot more for us to build sidewalks. There's easement issues and other, you know, we probably run into trickier areas than what we're talking about here. So it costs more, and then the issue of prevailing wage, because we like to actually pay people so that they can live. So it's, you know, it's hard then for us to, you know, want to accept or alter our calculations. But I understand as well that, you know, you could have a sidewalk built for significantly less. But my question, is there any movement above that, you know, sort of in between, somewhere in between that $12,000 and $33,000 that the developer would be willing to, to do as a sort of also a good faith, you know, effort and show of support? Or is, are you only authorized up to $12,000? So my, it's a real hard of the question.
Well, at the risk of being too frank with you, basically, the first, when I spoke to the developer about it, he said, well, the first question he said was, "Well, why would we pay more to do one option than it would cost us to do the other?" And I said, "Well, that's a, that's a reasonable question." I said, "Well, the answer is that, you know, it helps get more sidewalk built elsewhere, and it's smarter money for the town, and it's, you know, it's a better solution, really." So he was under the impression that if it went, quote-unquote, "a bit higher than the $12,000", he would be acceptable of that, but didn't think it needed to go too far.
Okay.
So I guess there's, there's some room there, but he didn't think the prevailing wage was anywhere near in the realm that he would be comfortable with.
The other issue is, next to this, there's a 40B being developed slowly.
Very slowly. Very. It's questionable whether it's being developed or not, just, yeah.
But if it is, that would entail more people and use of the sidewalk.
There already is a sidewalk in one side.
I know. I've seen it.
Yeah.
It's not in very good condition.
But maybe you mean on the side where the development would go, as opposed to on the other side?
Right.
Having a sidewalk there. Except they're only supposed, they only have to install a sidewalk on their frontage. So if and when that 40B project got built, then... So if and when that 40B project got built, then we'd have to deal with the sidewalk there. Actually, we issued, we had some sort of decision about that. I don't remember what it was, but, you know, it's a long, it's so long ago, I don't remember. DRB reviewed and everything, so probably, we didn't get to that level of detail, but yeah. Well, I'm really, I will say that I am hesitant to, to grant a steep discount only because I don't see the point of having, well, having a partial sidewalk on the other side of the street, based on the assumption that maybe there will be development down the road, when we could have money in the fund that could actually be used for sidewalks that are really need elsewhere in town. And my concern is, as I said, that if the money doesn't reflect our prevailing wage calculations, which I have no reason to distrust, then it's not going to go as far as it should. I mean, I, I would, I would rather have, I would rather have a contribution than a sidewalk that may not be useful. Although we do have sidewalks in town that come to an abrupt end, and, and people have to walk on the other side, or they have to walk in the street for some stretch. But, I mean, I'm, I'm willing to compromise somewhat, but not, not to take such a steep discount as, as this price difference would may mean, so.
I'm kind of in a similar boat. I think that if, if you give a single developer this much of a discount, I mean, not only do you have the sort of issues that Janet has already said, but you also set a precedent that you're willing to give, you know, a, a discount that's, you know, more than 50% on, on, on this contribution, and then you'll just have a string of developers asking for a similar discount. You know, I'm sure that, I'm sure that it's always possible to find contractors that will give you quotes for, for, you know, much less than, than sort of the typical bidding process that, that the town undergoes will, will produce. And so, at the end of the day, at the end of the day, my concerns for this are, you know, the, the ones that Janet raised, but also, you know, a precedent issue related to exactly how much we slash off of this, you know, and, and, and sort of what kind of precedent that would set.
Anybody else?
No, I'd just say, you know, it, it's tough, because we have a formula, and it makes sense to go with that formula. But my sense is, if we go with that formula, it's, they're going to build a sidewalk in an area nobody really wants a sidewalk. So I would suggest maybe putting in a condition of a $20,000 donation of the sidewalk fund and see where that gets us.
Okay. Yeah, I was gonna, I was going to suggest, what is it, between 11 and 12? Maybe a little higher.
A little higher. I, yeah, I'm flexible on the amount, I just...
No. 22, but, well, well, let's just say 20, 20,000. That sounds like a nice run. 22,000, 22.3. It just gets too, yeah. And, yeah, we'll just see if that's, what that, what happens with that. But, I mean, I have to say that I do appreciate, you've been to the DRB twice, I've been there both times, and I really appreciate your incorporation of all of, well, I think it's basically almost all of the suggestions they've made, including this latest one about dividing, creating two buildings instead of just having sort of a, a front texture indentation interest to break up what otherwise would have been a very long uninterrupted facade. I do appreciate all your efforts to incorporate their, their design suggestions, because, well, they, they actually, it's, they've gotten very seasoned, and they actually do a very good job for, for developers who are open to suggestion. You know, they're a smart group of people, and I'm not saying that just because I'm the liaison to the committee and I like, like the kind of stuff they deal with. But anyhow, but I do think, you know, this is the sidewalk issue. I, I don't want, you know, this battle to come down to the sidewalk, but we'll, we'll, we'll talk about this a little more. But I guess, if there are no, are there any other comments from the board?
What's the date on this plan with the two buildings?
This is July 10th.
Any other comments from the board, or should I open up to the audience? Okay. Audience?
Tara Fredericks, West Acton. I also thank you for going to the DRB. I really appreciate the changes. I have a question regarding the, the trees, because I counted 34, 36 very mature trees, you know, in the 15-inch, 12-inch range. And so I heard you say something about adding trees. Could you tell me that part again?
Correct. So there is a landscape plan to add some trees, and if you'll give me a second, I think.
I'm just interested in the number of trees to replace 36.
It's about 24 by the quick math that I did there.
Thank you. And then the, the historic trail, you will not be able to see it?
Well...
The building from the historic trail? That was the requirement of the National Register, is that correct?
We have a legal opinion from an attorney, and they believe that we don't need to go through any permitting for the trail because it's not federally or state-funded project.
Okay. And then I urge you to establish a firm policy relative to these discounts, because when I was here last time, you know, I felt like you were willing to go with what they were saying, and we wrote some letters, people wrote letters, and there's a lot of concern because the, we were at something like, where is Jim? We, we talked about the complete streets being at like 8% or something like that, and it's sort of embarrassing. And so I've been talking to the sidewalk people, and it seems that we don't have enough town staff to get the sidewalks built. And if we had a fund that was appropriately funded, we may be able to actually pay people to help us get these sidewalks in. And I would urge, like, a 10% discount, 20% max, because there's a management overhead that's not reflected necessarily in these rates, that, that they would have to engage in, that they wouldn't have to if they didn't have to build it and just gave, wrote the check. So with all due respect, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Danny Factor, Levin Davis showed. I have two questions for the developers, and I might want to hear Board of Selectmen members comment on well. The first has to do with affordability issues, and the second has to do with accessibility for people with disabilities. As far as affordability, I understand that our town affordability preferences call for one or more units priced for households at below 70% average.
Danny, Danny, this is, this is storage units. This is not housing.
My apologies.
It's all right, I thought, well, yeah, it'd be very cheap housing, I'll tell you. Oh, sorry.
Jim Snyder-Grant, just an opinion to put into your mix before you deliberate. Given the size of the development and the amount of cash that they're sinking into this, I'm pretty sure they could afford the full 30,000. So I think the law itself is not, you know, well-crafted for this kind of situation. But I'd prefer to see a deliberation about changing the bylaw in a context that wasn't, you know, in the context of a particular application. I'd rather see a more, a general, well-thought-out discussion about changing the law. If you, if you leave the required contribution at the, at the $30,000, you end up with one of two situations. Basically, the developer has to make a choice between whether they're going to be supporting the town in making it an even greater place to live, or whether they're going to build a useless sidewalk in order to save $18,000. And that's their choice. I think you should give them that choice. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the audience? All right, it's up to us to talk, and it seems as if we have one, one issue that pertains to the sidewalk, and we're getting all kinds of opinions from the audience that are actually not all sorts, but they're mostly on one side. Thoughts? Do you want to stick with the...
Yeah, I mean, I, I get it, and I'd like to just put it in, you know, the 33,000 and say, do what you want. I think my big concern is that they're going to say, I'm going to build the sidewalk to nowhere that nobody really wants. And it's just, to me, this seems like a reasonable way, at least for now, to get to a decent contribution to our sidewalk fund, so we can build a sidewalk in a part of town that really needs it. And then I think Jim's right that we should schedule, and I think maybe Peter talked about this, about having a, a separate conversation outside of a site plan permit to talk about the sidewalk contribution calculations and our policy on, A, where that money goes, because I know there's been some discussions in, in other site plans where the money went to recreation as opposed to sidewalks, as well as how we kind of deal with this issue when it comes up, and whether that's pursuing a change to our bylaw to clarify it, or a change in our, in our policies. I think that, I, I think that that would be good going forward, but for now, I, I recommend $20,000, and hopefully the developer sees their way to accepting that.
What do other, Joan Ching Sung, what do you think about compromise number?
So while I'm not opposed to a compromise amount, I do think that it's, like Katie said, I think it's very important that you have that, or that we have this discussion about the bylaw, because it seems very clear that the bylaw isn't functioning as intended at this point. And so, you know, I think that, that's sort of a larger discussion that, you know, whether we want to do that soon, or whether we want to do that, you know, later, that's, that's definitely something that should be on our radar. As far as this specific instance is concerned, you know, I'm not horribly opposed to compromising with the idea that the bylaw's going to be changed soon anyway, to better reflect what our goals and intentions are, and, and to create, you know, a, a stronger mechanism by which this sort of thing is handled, and it's not just going to be a discussion in every site plan, oh, exactly, you know, how much are we contributing to the sidewalk fund or anything like that? I don't think that's, I think that's something that we don't want to be doing with every site plan special permit, so.
Is this a bylaw?
It's part of our zoning. I was going to, I was going to ask Kristen if she had any words of wisdom for us about sidewalks or anything, bylaw requirements.
Yeah, so the, the site plan section of the bylaw requires a sidewalk be constructed along the frontage of the property. But, you know, an applicant could make a donation in lieu of constructing that sidewalk, because the bylaw does give the board allowance to make those types of considerations. In terms of requiring a monetary amount in the zoning bylaw, that's something we really would need to talk to council about, because these actions are kind of a difficult situation with Chapter 48, the State's Zoning Enabling Act. So we'd have to kind of tread lightly there and talk to them about how we would structure something like that. So right now, it's just been a policy of, in terms of the, the monetary amount.
So the $50 is not a bylaw? It's just a policy?
I mean, the policy has evolved to have money contribution in lieu of sidewalk in places where the sidewalk isn't needed. And the $50 linear foot is pricing that's come out of, I think it's the engineering department. It's practical considerations of what it actually costs to pay people to put in the sidewalk. So, yeah, it's, that part, you know, the bylaw is just put in the sidewalk, and we could do that. But as Katie said, we'll end up with a sidewalk that ends at the end of their frontage, and who knows, it may or may not be very useful, because we don't know for sure what's going to happen down at the, the end of the street, so. All right, so I'm hearing willingness to compromise, at least in this instance, with the, an agreement that we need to talk further about the pricing, the policy, since that really is what it is. Joan, are you willing to compromise, or?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, do we have...
I can make a motion to approve Site Plan Special Permit Number 05-04-17-467, with the changes noted in their most recent plan, and with a condition for a $20,000 contribution to the sidewalk fund.
The plan dated July 10th?
Is there a second?
Second.
Katie moves and Joan seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Standing. Now you have to try to sell it, right? Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to say one quick thing, just as a food for thought. Being on the building end of things and not on the town administration side, it's sometimes difficult, I think, in this case. I understand your dilemma, and I don't envy your dilemma. I think in some cases, it's hard to make a one-size-fit-all, or it's hard to make one policy that works well everywhere. And you've got some sidewalks that are very easy to build, that a builder, a developer would want to put in, and you've got other sidewalks that are very difficult, that they wouldn't want. So there's a huge variation on the developer's side on the motivation to make contributions or not contributions. And it would be somewhat difficult, I think, to make some blanket rule that was forced on everybody, because it would, you might end up with less money because you end up with people building sidewalks they don't particularly want, but, you know, they don't want to, you know, compensate. So the other thing I would quickly say is that I would encourage the town to think of it not as a one-for-one, where if you have 600, you give up 600 feet of sidewalk over here, you're trying to get 600 somewhere else, you're really getting a contribution, and then you can put it wherever you need to, and maybe 600 over here is worth 300 somewhere else? You know, and that's another way to look at it. So that's just two cents from this side of the...
No, well, I, no, I appreciate it. I mean, and this is the reason that we need to have a, a separate discussion about it, because it's, it's evolved. First, the requirement in the bylaw is putting in the sidewalk, and then situations arose where we realized that that really didn't work. It didn't seem appropriate in some situations. And so you try to find an, an alternative, and so this contribution developed. But then the contribution is starting to have, kind of getting fine-tuned, and, and we really need to talk about all of these possible scenarios and be able to address them so that, in future, if you come back to us with another project, or somebody else comes, we don't sit here talking about, you know, we've talked about everything else, and we're sitting down to talking about the sidewalk and, and going all over the place. But thank you very much for your patience. And, and again, for accommodating, including a lot of those design changes.
Thank you very much.
I'm looking forward to seeing it happen. I go to the post office a lot, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Now, we have an eight o'clock. Here's my notice. Can you see the notice?
Is there a notice for the eight o'clock one? The notice? There's no notice.
Sorry. That's right, this is not a hearing. This is just an appointment. Sorry. I have to, eight o'clock, Affordable Housing Proposal, 184 Main Street. So I should just say that this, the proponents' representatives are Mark O'Hagan and Satir Papalilo. I've seen them a number of times, including at Design Review Board meetings, but they, you also had a, a public outreach session, so, and some of us were at that as well, so.
Okay. Good evening. I am Mark O'Hagan. This is Satir Papalilo from Weston Development Group and Craftsman Village, Acton. We are here to propose, through the local initiative program, a small 40B project located at 184 Main Street. This is directly across from the Discovery Museum. There's an older yellow home that's in disrepair that was available for sale, which we have agreed to acquire. With the, the proposal, we are looking to do a total of eight townhomes in two structures. With the proposal, we are looking to do a total of eight townhomes in two structures, so relatively straightforward proposal. The site itself is just under an acre, it's 38,000 square feet, so about .83 acres. It is zoned in, I think it's Residential B, it's 20,000 zoning, so under current zoning, it would be just shy of two lots, so it is just one lot from a legal perspective, under the zoning that currently exists. Of the eight units, two of them would be proposed as affordable, in compliance with the local initiative program guidelines, as well as the local guidelines for affordable housing. Those would be sold to applicants at 80% of the median income. So the affordable units would be roughly 200,000. The homes themselves are three bedrooms, two and a half baths, with a two-car garage that would be located underneath. All the units are roughly the same, units on the end, there's a couple little variations for space, and the way that we dealt with some porches and stuff, but for the most part, the homes are pretty consistent in their, in their design. The way that we structured the site, we'll talk about the site a little bit, which is the lower plan. The homes themselves, the two structures are located up, essentially along the 30-foot offset line, which is the underlying zoning, and we're meeting the sideline zoning as well, which would be 10 feet on the sides, 10 feet on the backs, 10 feet on the rear. So we've maintained 20 feet on the sides and on the rear as well. The structure itself, we did, in the overall site layout, we did spend some time with the Design Review Board, as the chairman has mentioned, and incorporated pretty much everything that they had suggested. Their suggestions were to incorporate some of the front porches, which we've done, makes designs a little bit more consistent with what you see along the street. There were some questions and comments from some of the neighborhood about the scale of the buildings, and really from, we're located going, you know, all the way down towards the train station. The scale of the buildings, in terms of the two and a half stories with the front porch, is pretty consistent. There are some adjacent residences that are more of a cape, a bungalow design, that is a little bit lower scale, but the two and a half stories front porch with the garage is located in the rear, is pretty common along the street, particularly on the side of the street that we are. One of the things that we felt was, that was significant from the design aspect, given the amount of just traffic and activity on Main Street, was getting the garaging and the vehicles to be off of the street. So you can see the center entrance between the two buildings, so people would pull in off of Main Street, and then there'd be parking in the rear. So each unit has a two-car garage within the unit, and then we've also incorporated an additional 10 visitor parking spaces to be available for excess use. The design and the layout of those was also based on some feedback from the Design Review Committee, Design Review Board. The front porches, as I said, was also incorporated, as well as some of the different, various detailing along the front of the structure. They asked us to recess some of the dormers, to pull them back a little bit, that would bring the scale back. They asked for some modifications on the rear of the buildings, which we incorporated as well. The fencing along the front was a nice addition, that was part of their input. Sotir and I, we've been developing affordable housing for 25 years. It's pretty much the main focus of what our business has, and has been for a long time. Currently, right now, we're building a project in Bolton, called Craftsman Village Bolton, oddly enough, which are 30 detached homes, kind of different bungalows and capes, modest homes. And we're also building in Grafton, we have other projects in Harvard and Medway that we're planning, and can certainly provide more information to the board about our background. But dealing with affordable housing is what we do for a living, so we're very comfortable with the programs, very experienced in dealing with the different state agencies, trying to address the needs of the board, and doing our best to address the needs of the abutters as well. So far in the process, we have met with the ACHC, and I believe you have received the copy of the recommendation that they have provided. We have met with the Design Review Committee, and the comments that they received have been incorporated into the plans that you see in front of you. We also met with the department heads in conjunction with the planning board to get information and feedback from them, you know, for the availability of water, sewer, and services and such, which is all available. And we did hold a public meeting with the abutters last month, that I believe the chairman attended as well, to get some feedback from them, and to just answer any questions about the various, about the program, the local initiative program, and the project that we had in general. What we are seeking tonight is the approval of the local initiative application. I think everybody, this was submitted electronically to the board, I was advised, I didn't need copies for everybody. It's, the application is established by the state, it is what's requested and recommended by the ACHC. I think you'll find it to be a pretty complete application. It is a preliminary application, so the materials, as it relates to particularly the site plan, because there's been some questions about, you know, grading on the site, there's been some questions about drainage on the site, those will be addressed in a more, in the design phase, which, if the board was to approve this application, then the application would be submitted to DHCD, and upon their approval, we would be, you know, looking to come back to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and for the comprehensive permit, and with that application, we'd have a full design package, and would be able to answer all those questions a little more specifically. But the site itself, as it is roughly laid out, is very suitable to what we have. It does grade down, you know, kind of gently from the front to the back, about six feet, so pretty consistent with what our needs would be, to have the garages under, and to have the homes sitting very normally, or consistent with the roadway as a traditional structure, so they're not gonna be elevated up out of the ground on any basis. What we have also requested, as a separate request for the board in conjunction with the application, is what's called an exception, a small project exception. The state allows for developments that are under 20 units, that we can request that the need for an appraisal be waived. And in the package, we included, you know, some, I think the property card information, some local, you know, listings information. Essentially, what we've agreed to acquire the property for at $350,000 is fair and reasonable, generally consistent with values in the area, and if the board finds that to be acceptable, we took the liberty to provide a draft letter that meets the standards for the state. It just enables us to not have to do an appraisal. So it's a time situation, that it'd take an extra six weeks for their review, and it's money that, quite frankly, would be wasted, because I think that the value of the, of the property is reasonable and appropriate. So that would be the secondary request. So I guess specifically, any, if the board was in favor of the application, we'd request the chairman to sign it, along with Nancy Taveneer, Chairperson of the Acton Community Housing Corp., and then that would be submitted to DHCD for their review, and hopeful approval.
Yeah, I include it in our packet, thank you very much for that overview, which is very helpful. I did include in our packet, or a reference to sort of the 40B standards, because I'm pretty familiar with the way that projects get approved under Chapter 40B. There's the so-called, the standard approach, which is also known as unfriendly, I guess, where the developer just goes straight to the state, and then, and then eventually comes back to the locals, Zoning Board of Appeals. Our town typically has preferred the so-called friendly approach, which is the local initiative project approach, which has the developer conferring with the local officials, residents, and others, and departments, to try to modify things to make their, to build acceptance for the project locally. And then at that, if you have that approach, then the project will come to the Board of Select, and the Board of Selectmen essentially have to sign off on the preliminary, it's preliminary plan, because the first stage involves sending the project to the state, the Department of Housing and Community Development, for approval, a preliminary approval of the site, and that will, the DHCD rep will come out and look at the site. They look at things like how close transportation is, or services are. I think that this location is pretty good in that respect. And also, there's a certain consideration of sort of the style, which I think that the Acton Community Housing Corporation memo addresses more fully, but there are certain elements that the state will be looking at, and then if all of that passes muster, and along with the finances, which we don't get into, you have to pass muster, then that will result in a DHCD approval of the preliminary site, and then the project comes back to the town, and it goes to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a full-blown, it's a comprehensive permit hearing. And all of the departments, all of the committees have a chance, residents have another chance to weigh in on the project at that point. So it's a two-step process, I think sometimes people don't really understand that at this stage, there's still a lot more, it's not as if we sign off on it, and then it's done. You have a lot more to go through before it comes to fruition, and that process can take quite a long time, it's a pretty thorough process. But anyhow, I don't right now have any questions, so maybe my colleagues have questions or comments, concerns, something? No? Katie?
Sure, just a couple quick questions. I attended the public forum, and that was very helpful as well, and helpful to hear the concerns of neighbors, I think one of the larger concerns was around traffic. And one of my questions is just, I know you've mentioned you've done a lot of other projects, 40B projects in other communities, are there ones of this scale that you've done in other communities that you could sort of comment on, if you've heard any concerns around increased traffic or impacts related to those, since they've been built?
Yeah, I mean, generally, I think the scale of the project, that eight units, and we have done similar ones, we actually just completed one in Hingham about a year and a half ago, two years ago, that was eight homes on a street, again, relatively busy, a feeder street to commercial areas, and shopping districts and such, and the, you know, given the amount of cars and the flow that you have, it really had a minimal impact. I did see in one of, I think the communication from the planning department, talking about what triggers a traffic study locally, and I did do some review based on how projects are typically evaluated in relation to, it's called the ITE, which is a traffic engineer group, which establishes standards. I did, I did put together a brief memo that I can submit if you want. This was done internally, and we're not engineers, but the basics, it's pretty straightforward. They have guidelines for the trip generation, based on the different types of housing. So based on this type of housing, of a condo or a townhouse design, on a per-unit basis, or a dwelling unit basis, it, this would generate about six trips a day, is the per-unit, that's trips in and trips out, which would be roughly 46 vehicle trips. They also calculate what's estimated as the peak AM periods, presumably when you're leaving, and the peak PM periods when you're coming back. And based on those standards, it would be about three and a half trips in the morning, and about 4.3 trips in the afternoon. So this is based on the standards that your traffic designers use. So I can submit copies of this for the board. Again, I do stress, this is just us putting it together based on the standards, which we did include in the memo, so we're not purporting to be, and traffic engineers. But overall, I think, eight units, it, in the scope of the amount of traffic that Main Street gets, particularly, excuse me, as a connector street, it really is extremely modest of an impact. And with the town's threshold for a traffic evaluation being at 400, you know, based on the standards, even if, you know, people can question those numbers, we're at, you know, we're at under 50, so we're at 10 to 12% of what the threshold would be for a typical review. And we can certainly have our engineers do a little more evaluation going forward, but this was just to provide, you know, some ballpark numbers on a preliminary basis, as the project is preliminary. So I can submit several copies of this to the board, if you wanted. Pass that down, might be the easiest way. One of the other questions that came up, that I forgot to mention, is the status of the structure. The structure itself, it is on the local resource list. It's not on a state list, it's not on a federal list. The property owners that we're acquiring it from, they had had it on the market for a pretty reasonable period of time. What we were advised is that they did have several people that showed some interest of potentially keeping the structure and rehabbing it, but once they got into it, really saw the status of it, that they were, you know, everybody there was just backed out of the deal. It's really in very, very bad shape, on the exterior, on the interior. So after a couple of meetings with the Historical Commission, in March, they made the determination that they put a 12-month hold on the ability to demolish the structure, which would go out through till about March, I forget exactly what the date is, but for March 2018. So we certainly wouldn't be doing anything prior to that, and we'll let that timeframe expire, before we were gonna do anything with the property itself. It would be taken down, it really needs to be taken down, it's a hazard. We did, in conjunction, you know, with the meeting, we did have the lawn mowed out there to make it look a little more presentable, it was getting, getting pretty shaggy, so. We neatened it up, and we'll keep an eye on it over the summer going forward, so that it doesn't become, the yard itself won't at least become the eyesore that it is. The structure, we have no rights and no liability to go near it, so. So those are just.
Sure, no, that's a good segue into sort of my next, it's not really a question, but point, is the status of the historic structure. On the liaison for the Historical Commission, I was at the meeting in the hearing where they voted to declare that a perfectly preserved building, and put the 12-month demo delay, and I think the concern is that really the 12-month delay is not supposed to be a time period to just wait out. It's supposed to be a time that the owner should be going out and making good faith efforts to try to find solutions for rehabbing the house, and, you know, again, and not just selling it to a developer with the stipulation that they'll only buy it when the 12-month delay runs out. That's what we've been seeing happen a lot. This is not your fault, and it's not a comment on your application, it's just a general comment, something Historical Commission is working on and looking into through their chapter and bylaw, as well as, you know, their policies and procedures, because we're seeing this happen in a lot of properties all over town, and it's a bigger issue that needs to be dealt with. It's unfortunate, I mean, they, you know, and I think one of the things that, I don't know, Kristen, if the memo that you guys, or that sort of grid that you guys put together is part of the application that goes to DHCD, if it is, I, I, there's a question on there that says, you know, I don't have it in front of me right now, but it was essentially, you know, one of the checkboxes was, you know, does not have a negative impact on historical structure, and it was checked yes, and then there was the note that, you know, it's on the cultural resources list, and there's a 12-month delay, and they'll be waiting that out. So while, yes, technically, it doesn't violate that bylaw in any ways, this project does still have an impact on a cultural resource. That building is still a cultural resource, according to the town, so I think that that should be changed, if this is a, I don't know if that was just for us, okay, that's just for us, okay. So, again, not, this is not, I think it's too late, unfortunately, in terms of this project, and it's really a note for the owners that, you know, did this legally, correctly, but not sort of within the spirit of the bylaw, and it's something that the Historical Commission is working on, but I just want to make that note. It's unfortunate to see that house torn down, and I do think, you know, the Historical Commission, when, they always go out and tour these houses, and there are plenty that they go and see, and they really are, the Historical Commission does not just put a delay on everything, they really take it under consideration, there are plenty that they have, you know, allowed to be torn down, because they're unfortunately no longer in a shape to be saved, but, you know, in their opinion, the, there, I think, there's the original part of the house, and then there's the newer part, and the newer part, I think, is actually in worse shape. And in their opinion, that older portion, the original portion of the house, could be saved in some way, so they did put the delay on that. And I, you know, again, just want to make that note, that it's something we need to deal with on a larger scale going forward, and they are working on. My question for you, though, is about the utilities. Will you be using gas at all for this, or what is your plan for?
Yeah, the intention would be to utilize municipal water and sewer gases on the street, we're advised, we would be using that as well.
Okay, so I think it's early enough, this is one of our goals related to sustainability, is also discouraging the use of natural gas, and I think it's early enough in your process still. You know, as you said, you're not in the final design or site plan in any way, and so I'm going to strongly encourage you to work with our town engineering, to work with Green Acton, to work with anybody to investigate other forms, particularly the mini-split option as opposed to connecting to natural gas. I think it would, you know, they're cheaper, well, they're not cheaper than natural gas right now, but they are, it's not as expensive as they used to be, and especially when you're talking about a new development, and they do both the heating and cooling. So I'm going to strongly encourage you to look into that, and perhaps it's a suggestion we can put in our letter of approval as well. But those were sort of my general comments about this, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, does this fall within the Kelly's Corner situation?
I don't believe we're within the zoning district or the overlay district. We're about a half a mile, I think, from Kelly's Corner ballpark. So we're a little outside that district, but general area.
Okay. Ching So, anything?
I guess my only question is related to the general procedure and sort of, and sort of the request for the waiver of the appraisal as to, so I understand obviously that the appraisal is part of the standard procedure for doing this sort of thing, and I was curious as to, and, you know, this is not specific to this thing, but as to why, you know, if there's market rate, you know, acquisition agreements for this stuff, you know, and often real estate processes, you know, there's an appraisal done beforehand. You know, I'm just curious what makes this one special, that there's no need to follow that procedure, or, you know, whether or not there's something that I'm aware that the appraisals typically turn up something, a different value that I'm just not aware of, and then there's, I don't know, I was just curious as far as the specific situation regarding appraisals and these kinds of projects?
I mean, I can speak to that a little bit. This is very common, I've done it half a dozen times for small projects. You know, when you're dealing with a $2 million acquisition, the state wants to go in, make sure that that value is reasonable and appropriate based upon the underlying zoning for the property. You get into the larger projects, and there's a feeling that oftentimes that the value of the land for the acquisition is somewhat inherent in the potential permitting for the project. So that's really what the intent of the appraisal is, because that number gets incorporated into your cost basis and your cost certification basis going forward. So with the small projects, where it's a relatively modest number, and it can be kind of more easily evaluated, they do allow this exception for things under 20 units. So really, the special aspect as it relates to this is just that it's a modest project. It's a very common waiver that is requested in conjunction with DHCD. As I said, I've done it, you know, in many communities with the scope of project. So I wouldn't say this project itself is unique, it's just the fact, given the modest ties, the state allows for this.
The other thing I would note is in the guidelines, which we had several copies of the excerpts pertaining to the exception, it says upon, it does say that you're supposed to submit an application that has land valuation, the allowable land value of a site for purposes of the act is the fair market value of the site under current zoning, as is market value at the time of submission of a request for project eligibility, which is the thing that the proponents are going to be submitting to the state for the preliminary approval of the site. Under there, it says, "Exception upon written requests of the chief executive officer, which is the Board of Selectmen, the subsidizing agency may waive the appraisal requirement for proposed projects of 20 units or less, provided that the developer submits satisfactory evidence such as local tax assessment, limited appraisal, or opinion of value from a licensed real estate broker that reasonably supports the acquisition cost. The purpose of such a waiver is to relieve the cost burden for smaller developments that are sponsored or supported by the local community where the reasonableness of the acquisition cost is not at issue." And in our correspondence, I included, I did communicate with the town assessor who said that he, you know, he opined, he said it wasn't an in-depth assessment, but, you know, he said $350,000 for the acquisition cost seemed like a reasonable value, given that the assessed value is lower than that. And what you're using, I mean, you're using it in costing out the project, and ultimately, I think I would be leery of a value that was too high, because then it goes to the whole issue of profits from the project, which if they're over 20%, the excess comes back to the town. So, and we have had some incidents with some developers who overstated their expenses or understated whatever. They understated their profits and they kind of ripped us off, so. So we, and that's not the situation, this is a very, we have the highest value out there that seems relevant, and they're proposing to use that.
No, I was just curious.
Well, I think. You'd have to ask whoever developed the standard.
I was just curious.
Yeah.
General policy. Not as much about the standard.
And the other thing I would say, Katie was talking about sort of historical houses, and how a number of them are ultimately getting demolished. I mean, this is an ongoing issue, and I have said to some people who are historic preservation people, you've got to develop a plan, because usually what happens is it's on the developer or it's on the town, you know, sort of looking at the source of the deep pocket to rescue the houses. And I really think that there are enough people who are interested in historic preservation in town that, you know, maybe they could develop a clever plan for pooling resources or building a trust or something like that. The other thing that I had suggested is that people know where the historical houses are, and you know who's living there, and you know if the person is kind of getting in his or, over his or her head, and the house is starting to deteriorate. And that's, you start communicating with those people, and you start engaging them and seeing if you can, you know, arrange something so that they either are able to maintain it or they sell it to somebody who's willing to do the work to maintain historical property. Historical property is very difficult to maintain, it's a big money sink, even for people who have historical properties and love them. So unfortunately, there are people who end up living in historical properties who really ought not to be there because it's expensive to maintain. And, you know, any house is expensive to maintain, but historical properties can be very expensive. So anyhow.
Yeah, I was just going to say, and it's just kind of a chicken and an egg from a developer, even from the perspective of the property owner, that, you know, we can't, we're not going to move forward and invest in something with the time and the energy and the resources unless we have, you know, we have an agreement, we have it in place. So we did talk with the family many months before we completed the agreement, and they were, you know, I mean, they were trying to sell that it was listed for some time, but I do understand the concerns of the town. It is, it's a difficult situation from a resource perspective.
And if I understand, if I recall correctly from looking at the file, this was the estate of, the estate that was trying to sell the property. So it's not as if the person who had been living there was, he was gone, so, right? Or somebody was gone anyhow, it was the estate trying to sell, who had owned the property and was trying to sell it, so.
Correct.
There's sort of different other pressures and interests that come into play in those sorts of situations, so.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just say they are, the historical commission has been working on a number of those issues, and like I said, is working to update and look at their bylaw and what other communities do, and looking at best practices. They're also a volunteer board with not a lot of people and quite a few historical houses in town, so it's a decent amount of effort, but they're putting a lot of time and energy into this. And like I said, it's not, you know, against your project in particular. It's just a disappointment that the owners sort of, you know, skirted the spirit of the law where they did put it on for a while, but, you know, judging by what was said at the hearing and everything that's going on, I don't think they made that much of a bona fide effort to try to sell this to somebody that could rehab it. And the problem is that, you know, you guys will buy it for $350,000, which is more than what somebody who wants to rehab the house will do, is going to pay them. So yes, there are a lot of considerations when you're, you know, talking about estates and those things, and it's, you know, you want to balance, you know, allowing people to get, you know, the value, you know, of the home, but it's unfortunate when the way our system is set up now allows them to get a lot more to put in, you know, to tear down a home that potentially could be saved. So again, there is a lot of work going on by a lot of volunteers, but they're volunteers, and most of them are on numerous other boards as well, so they, you know, they do what they can, and they're continuing to work on it. Just wanted to express this disappointment in this forum, and again, it's not a dent on your proposal in particular.
Any other comments from the board, audience?
Tara Fredericks, I'm with Acton. I want to just thank you for your comments about saving these historic buildings. We need staff support, there's no way these volunteers can do this work. It's, we're basically, you know, facing a fire hose of applications and projects, and people are taking advantage of that. And unless we're going to actually invest in our town and get our staff, we could even just do it with a policy to say, to have staff spend more time on this than other things, because they spend a lot of time treating developers like clients, in my opinion. And we may, we could put a fee in place to, that when somebody's doing something with a historic building, demolishing it, that we put a fee in place to pay for preservation of other future buildings. I personally live in an old house, I don't feel like it's a big dollar sink, but thank you for appreciating, because some people feel like it is. All right, I have some questions. First of all, the 16, is it, it's eight units equals six trips a day, but there's 16 garages and however many spaces for guests, and so I question that six trips a day. And I question this traffic analysis, which tends to, in my experience, they pay the consultant to prepare a report that says there's no impact. And if you take the trips per day and add them to the F that we're getting already in Kelly's Corner, which is, you know, a number of yards away, it's hard to see how that could suddenly be no impact, but that's just that. I want to know, I have some questions for the developer, may I ask them directly to him? Go ahead. What did you pay for the property?
We have a purchase and sale agreement for $350,000.
Is the building materials, are you using LEED? Are you certifying or using any LEED?
No, it wouldn't be LEED. We will be building in conjunction with the MassSafe program, so we do need to meet certain standards with blower door tests and environmental reviews and energy savings throughout the building. So this is, will be a very up-to-date, modern-type building with energy conservation in mind throughout the entire construction cycle.
Is the fence planned to be wood or plastic?
Probably plastic to keep the maintenance expense down for the future residents.
I take exception to the characterization of our Main Street as being a connector street. It's, I think it's disrespectful to the people that live here. And I certainly prefer wood, if you've ever driven down streets where there are shiny plastic things that says that we don't care about our town, and we do. I want to thank the board for using the term subsidizing agency, because as a subsidizing agency, you're giving a subsidy to a developer, and we have rights relative to certain court rulings, and so I appreciate your calling it subsidizing agency. One of these is to get the pro forma, I'm sorry, the pro forma dollars, the budget for the project. David Hahn indicated to me, based on some numbers he was showing me, that they could afford to move the house and rehab it. If we don't want to do that, they certainly could put dollars into a preservation fund that we could be establishing for such projects. At the very least, one of these units should be actually affordable to people who are housing insecure, 30%, 50%. They're doing this in Boston. These designs aren't any better than I can see in Dorchester or Roxbury when I see the projects there, and they're getting 30% and 50%. Another question, because the two to two-and-a-half stories, this appears to be three stories. It looks like it's exactly the same height as the condos at Cameret that people see there, and I want to know how, what the height is in feet.
The height of this structure, the underlying zoning allows for a maximum building height based on the local definition of 36 feet. We're at about 32, so we're in compliance with the local bylaw.
Thank you. What are the houses next to it?
It, I don't know specifically what it is. I know to the right is more of a one-and-a-half story. That is more of a kind of a bungalow cake design that I had referenced earlier. To the left of it is two stories. And then again, further down the street and across the street, many are the same, you know, general scale as it relates to the height of the buildings.
Just going to read a, this is out of the guidelines for DHCD, it'll take just a moment, that the local subsidizing agency is allowed to mitigate the height and scale of the buildings to adjoining sites. It's particularly important to consider the predominant building type setbacks and roof lines of the existing context. The massing of the project should be modulated or stepped in perceived height, bulk and scale to create an appropriate transition to adjoining sites. Take advantage of natural topography, may use architectural details, et cetera, but mass and height relative of adjacent streets is critically important. This is out of their own documents.
Tara, where are you reading from? I just discovered where you got subsidizing agency from, and I was not talking about local subsidizing, I was talking about DHCD, is that what you were talking about?
Yes, this is from the guideline.
Okay, so what are you, where are you reading from right now?
This is the guideline handbook that was in your packet today.
Which page, though?
I'm looking at IV-2 and IV-3. And any approving agency is a subsidizing agency according to this court.
Can you paraphrase what you're reading?
Yes, it's the, under the design section, so it's number 3B findings. The regulations at 760 CMR 56.04 set out the findings that are necessary for determination of project eligibility by a subsidizing agency. These guidelines elaborate on some of these findings, and this is actually, I'm only noting it to you in the hopes that these guys will hear too. We had a very important hearing with, under the Walker case, the Walker daycare that found that the neighborhood, the size of the building, the massing, was something that we could mitigate. So in that light, I read the DRB memo, and they want more review time before the Board of Selectmen approval, and I hope you do that, we have plenty of time left, we have six months on the demo delay. I feel like we need a 3D perspective so that you can see how huge this is compared to the other buildings, how out of place it is in design. Yes, the DRB, you've done a lot with them, and I appreciate that, but there's a long way to go. Relative to the numbers, they can afford a much more affordable unit. If they're taking this profit, they can afford a decent look in design. I think that's all of my comments. Yeah, so I guess I'm asking for a commitment to get us a pro forma so that we can see where this money is going, so that we can determine whether or not we can have a good design and/or a much lower AMI, or perhaps both, like they're getting in the middle of the city. The land prices are much higher there, and they're getting better designs and lower AMI, and I think that we should demand the same, thank you.
It's always been my understanding of the pro forma was the state's role to analyze, and then after that, the whole thing comes back to us.
Yes, but we.
This is not, this is not the stage, and I think that you brought this issue up before, and it, you know, that's not our role, we're not supposed to be analyzing the pro forma. That's the state's role.
It's their role to analyze.
We're looking at other things, like proximity to conveniences, transportation, and some sense of continuity with the town and the area, but.
I just want the board to know that they have the right to get these things, and they have the right to withhold an approval until it meets certain things that have nothing to do with zoning, thank you.
Danny Factor 11 Davis Road, and I do want to confirm this is 184 Main Street? I am on the right agenda item? Very good, thank you, and my apologies again.
You don't have to apologize, that was actually rather amusing.
Can I ask permission to ask the developer a couple of questions? So specifically, and the last speaker raised it, as far as the affordability issue. So specifically, and the last speaker raised it, as far as the affordability issue, the DHCD guidelines in their affordability preferences and the income targets talk about one or more units priced for households at below 70% of average median income. Am I correct? It looks like it says no there, that there is no such unit in this proposed development?
No, there is. There's two units that are to be affordable. And based on and included in the package that was submitted was the pricing worksheet that DHCD uses to make sure that the numbers proposed are in compliance with their guidelines. So the maximum income for those units is 80% of the median income. The pricing for the homes is actually based on 70% of the median income, so there is a reasonable window of affordability. So for a household of four, the maximum income would be about, I think 73,000 is the max now. It's gone up recently.
Okay, thank you. And my other, my other question has to do with accessibility for people with disabilities. Am I correct that none of the units are accessible in that way for someone who would live there and use a wheelchair?
We haven't designed on that basis. Typically, what we do for people in conjunction with the affordable housing outreach and marketing effort is that we will make certain accommodations for people that have, that have some disabilities. I would say the design for these structures isn't ideal because they are relatively vertical with the garage on the lower level, living on the first floor, and then bedrooms on the second floor. But we certainly would make accommodations for, you know, door openings if they needed ramps and those types of things. But we typically do that on an as-needed basis. You know, my experience has been in the past that, you know, oftentimes, once the, you know, when the lottery is done, that the disabilities that people have and that they're requesting accommodation for are, you know, more limited and don't, you know, require extensive retrofitting for the buildings. So, but that is how we typically address it, and that would be our proposal here as well.
Thank you. So to the board, I just, I just want to say that you're aware enough that we have a housing crisis both statewide and citywide. I'm a local attorney myself. I work with a lot of low-income people who sit on waiting lists, both for reasons of low income. And while I appreciate that we're creating more, and I would consider this still to be middle-income housing, that, you know, we need to, you know, work more with the Acton Housing Authority and provide more very low-income housing as well. And again, while I appreciate the fact that we're making accommodations for all kinds of people with disabilities, the amount of units that are actually accessible to people who use wheelchairs and do require vertical access is very small. And we see a disproportionate number of people of low income and people with disabilities on these lists. So I encourage the Board of Selectmen to make that a priority. Thank you.
Thank you, Danny. I would just note that later in our agenda, we'll be talking about a project that may pique your interest, so...
Thank you.
Or, yeah, future project, but funding for it. Thank you.
My name is Greg Bishop. I live with my wife at 190 Main Street, which is two houses away from the development. I want to second the prior speaker's point about access, accessible low-income places because in her last few years, my mother lived in one, in this town. So I'm not an opponent of low-income housing. And I also have the benefit of having a couple of friends who are developers, one out of state and one here. So I appreciate the difficulty, and I also appreciate, well, one of my other friends who has passed away simply couldn't make money doing affordable houses. Although he was in Concord, maybe you can't do it there, I don't know. So I'm in favor of that too and of the efforts that you're making. But I also must second and agree with Ms. Fredericks' remark that I think it would be wise to take more time to look at this in the ways she suggested. To put it simply, I don't think this is as compatible as it could be and should be to be consistent with the other houses. And although I appreciate that the developer is saying this is a modest product, project, and I know that it is because I've seen some of the others, it's not a modest project for this neighborhood. This is an enormous building in the context of the neighborhood. I neglected to mention that we have lived in our present house for 45 years. But we're not an Acton resident, really, because we weren't born in the house like the people who used to live in the historic house we're talking about. So I've seen another request like this in the neighborhood. The house across the street wanted to subdivide and add a little bit of construction to make another dwelling unit. And all of the then-abutting people applauded. And there is, I think, I believe it's a single mother and her child living in that unit today. And we've always been delighted to see that that unit is there and lit up and people live in that house. And it didn't change the neighborhood at all to have that modification to an existing large house. And for the record, I recommend that the board do whatever they can to support that kind of improvement for lower income. That's logical lower income if it's not legal lower income. So that has worked out very well. In fact, I'm afraid this paradigm of the large building, which in our butters view is inconsistent with the neighborhood, such as it is, there is a neighborhood and it has a consistency. I think this paradigm will in the long, in the long term, supplant what you see there now. I am old. Anyone who doubts, just look closely. My neighbor, who has spoken to this matter before and raised the attention, is a lot younger, but he's very idealistic, and we still are. So as I look downstream, as several houses that have been recently developed better into our, in our neighborhood, including my neighbor directly, have families and small children and intend obviously to live there if the community of jobs permits until their kids go to college. And I see the neighborhood changing at every opportunity to support this kind of paradigm because of the sewer, because of the press for housing. And there will be no more neighborhood as it's known today very soon. I can remember when there actually were single-family houses on Massachusetts Avenue in Cambridge. I have a picture of one between two monstrous tall buildings. It was soon gone, but that's when I was a teenager. So we're looking presently at having open space, yards, and able to see big space between houses where you can see other trees and some sky. Ultimately, that's what we, I won't live to see it. It'll probably take 20 years or more. But I think what you can expect to see as the pressure continues and people feel like their property has lost value and has certainly lost aesthetics, and that's why I really support what Ms. Fredericks said, it'll look like, well, I was just away for two weeks and I came back and I looked at Kelly's Corner. And right across the street from Quill and Press, there's a solid wall. The last house is gone. And when you approach it, you can't tell there's any gap at all because you're seeing it edgewise. So what we're looking at ahead is not a neighborhood of houses, but a street that's kind of like driving through a housing development. I grew up in the Back Bay. If you've been to Newbury Street or Marlborough Street, what you see is like a canyon of brownstones. There's no space at all. It's, they're beautiful buildings if you like brownstones. I've lived in two of them for a good piece of my youth. But that's not here. That's a different look. Imagine, if you will, I could have done this, but I didn't have time, make a whole, make a whole string of these, about 20 long, and then look at them edgewise and put them on both sides of the street. And then, you know, back to the future, in 20 years, that's what Main Street will look like towards South Acton as houses get sold and opportunities, I mean, you're looking at millions of dollars value in this new property. The pressure is there from all directions. So I support the delay and better looking at what this, I mean, everybody says this is inevitable, but I'm still idealistic. I still would love to have my daughter take over our house and raise our granddaughters in that place, but I don't think she'll want to now. And even if we do get full value, which I doubt, you know, this thing won't be that good for downsizing for us either, but the neighborhood will be wildly different. It won't be the same neighborhood. It won't look the same. People's views will be changed. And I think this needs a lot closer look than it has from that perspective. Illustration, 32 feet of height. May I ask the developer a question? Sir, is that as measured from the grade at the front of the house to the peak of the roof?
The way, the definition, as I believe it's the median grade. So we have, you know, from the front to the back, there's probably an eight-foot drop, so they pick the midpoint of that, not the high point or the low point. They pick the midpoint. And I believe it's the midpoint of the highest peak is the, what is the basis of the calculation in the local bylaw.
Well, that's a little more fair than I expected. When you, if you did it from the back, if you look from the back, you have that whole additional floor that you have to have for the garage.
Correct.
And that's exactly what you have, if you look at the front of the houses by Kmart, because they have the garage at the bottom and up they go.
Correct.
So that, just to clarify, the appearance from the front is a lot different thing than the poor fellow with the new house directly behind, very large, I think he's yellow, yellow house. I don't think the gentleman's here today. But he sees something very, very different. And again, the difference between the houses in the neighborhood now is that they can hold one or two families, they can have a yard for their kids to play in. The Smiths who moved in north of us have a fence all around it. They don't know, but I call it Smith Park because they close the doors and they, they can have kids come there, they import kids to play with their kids in their nice little yard. So this won't have that. And instead, it'll have kids looking for a place to play. So very different. If I could choose, I'd see two duplexes instead of what's there. I don't get to choose, but I get to tell you what it's like for someone that's been there a while. So I recommend, I support what Ms. Fredericks said. At least wait and look closer. Maybe, if you, maybe it won't go forward, but at least you have my best input. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name's Jason Temple. I live at 34 Prospect Street. My wife and I moved in about 13 years ago, and we actually chose one of those lovely old Victorians and, to your earlier point, sank a small fortune into restoring it and, you know, thoroughly enjoy it and love it today. I'm, while I share many of the sentiments of, you know, the demise of these older homes and in the wave of this opportunity that's being put in front of you, my concern is actually around safety. The developers have done a very good job, it sounds like, of applying for all the forms, all the permits, all the necessary work that the count of Acton requires, save one, and that is a traffic study. An analysis of what 16 cars plus potentially 10 guest parking spots directly across from another intersection, that being the Discovery Museum, thank you, would add. And it is my supposition that these people who work there, or excuse me, who live there will be working, families, potentially dual income. And so each one of them is going to be leaving roughly between 8:00 and 9:30 or whatever in the morning and returning around, you know, the same rush hour time in the evening, adding that kind of vehicle congestion to a road that is already pretty frightening. So what I learned in our last meeting and did some digging around is next to this unregulated intersection, just next to us here, Concord and 27, Prospect and Main is the second most dangerous intersection. I've seen the side experiences firsthand. I think it's even more terrifying than the Concord Rotary. But what I've seen is with the traffic, just the gradual increase of traffic over the 13 years, we had, we had an out, excuse me, we had a bit of a, a moment of relief by adding a sidewalk in, on our street. That's done a lot. You know, we have three kids, they've gone through the school system, they're off to college now. But it's, you know, I run, I take my dog up to Great Hill, I cycle, and getting near that intersection is terrifying. And, you know, when we spoke after the last town meeting, many of the neighbors shared very similar experiences. So a little more digging around, I saw in the 2018 budget that we have, I think it's $40,000 set aside for a traffic study of that intersection. Is there any way that we can have some sort of a, an analysis that's done ahead of that? Or is there a way to, I know you can't take 2018 money and put it in this fiscal year, but can we put it upon the developer, pay them back? I don't know what, what can be done to better understand the impact that that is going to add to just, just the regular local traffic.
Just to note, we are in FY '18 as of July 1st, so it's, it's not, it's not calendar year, it's fiscal year. So that money is for this fiscal year, which we are now in. So the study will be happening sometime this fiscal year, which could be now or...
Is that, is the execution of that traffic study at your discretion? Is it already scheduled for a certain date? I could not find that on our, I could not find that on our...
Assistant Town Engineer, you know?
I don't have a specific date, but we can certainly relay the interest in this concern with the Town Engineer who will be performing the study.
Because if there are some drastic, you know, changes, one way is lights or something like that, we should, we should understand what that's going to mean before we make it worse. That's, that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Jonathan Craft. I live at 188 Main Street, which is directly above this property. As Jason and Greg have said before, I, we have several issues. We've discussed some of them with the developer at previous hearings, but I think our biggest concern, we have two young children, is the safety issue that this project brings to the neighborhood. The entryway from this project onto Main Street is directly across from the entryway to the Discovery Museum. The Discovery Museum, my understanding is they get about 500 cars a day or 500 visits a day. This is going to add, I mean, we're saying 16 cars going in and out at rush hour. I cannot get in and out of my driveway in the morning already. So if we're adding, say, close to 50 additional trips each day, it's going to be much more difficult. We have one sidewalk, we have, especially when Discovery Museum has events, we have families, young children walking by trying to cross the street right there. It is incredibly dangerous. The last event, it was in June, they had to bring a traffic cop in to allow people to cross the street. So if we are adding another project here, it is essentially going to be a cross intersection on Main Street. And this is between the Prospect and Main Street intersection and the Central and Main Street intersection, which is down by the commuter train. In the morning, it is going to be an incredibly dangerous place to be. And we have Kelly's Corner, which is undergoing studies, and there's a lot going on with that. We now have Prospect, which we're doing studies on that. And we also have Central, Central Street and Main Street and the commuter train. And these three very dangerous places, we are feeding more traffic into these problems and it's just exacerbating the situation. And my concern is that if we go ahead with even, I mean, from my perspective, this is not a minor project. The buildings are 90 feet long. The houses on either side are no more than 30 feet. So each house is a third of one of those buildings. There is 20 feet separating, essentially 20 feet separating my house from that, which goes 50 feet from front to back. It is a .8 acre lot, which is shallow and long. So you have two 90-feet buildings going directly down Main Street with a small, I guess it's a 30, it's less than 30-foot driveway between them. So you have to drive out between them. And it, sightlines are going to be difficult, just the safety issue, if we could get a study done to look at this issue. It's not, it's not just this project that is... just this project that is adding traffic, it's also Prospect, it's also Central, it's also Kelly's Corner. And so, it's a larger issue than just this project, so feeding more into this, um, it's going to create additional problems, and I know there have been problems up and down Main Street with pedestrians, with accidents, and I would like to figure out how to address that. Um, now, getting to my neighbor Greg's point with the fit in the neighborhood, um, the designers have worked with the design review board to incorporate some aspects of houses in the neighborhood. However, the houses immediately adjacent to this project bear no resemblance to this. From Prospect, there is a one-story single house, then a two-story house, then another two-story bungalow, and then we live in a, I guess it's two floors, but it's one-and-a-half story cape, and on the other side is a two-story colonial. So, you have very small housing leading into these very large blocks. Um, there is, I don't know if designs can be changed to incorporate changes in size, changes in depth, in order to create a more unified appearance with the neighborhood. We are not necessarily against affordable housing in the neighborhood. Um, the houses in the neighborhood are not on the expensive side as it is. So, I mean, there is not much difference between an affordable unit and other houses in the neighborhood, but this project itself will change the entire dynamics of the neighborhood. It will increase safety issues, and, I mean, it's, the people who live in the neighborhood, most of them have young children, most of them, these are their first houses, or they've lived there, I mean, Greg and Candy have lived there for forty-five years, and, and I mean, so we have a mix, it's a good mix in the neighborhood. And so, this project, I think, will change that, and as Greg said, will create the canyon down Main Street. You're going to move Kelly's Corner and those larger buildings up the street into this more residential neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. I would add, though, that, um, yeah, the traffic on, on twenty-seven is just bad regardless. Uh, it's a through street, a lot of people use it to go from other towns through Acton, and, I mean, I think that, the, we've learned about Kelly's Corner, that one of the issues is a lot of the traffic that's going through there is, is going through there, they're not, they're not stopping. Um, and so, whatever happens locally is, has to grapple with the fact that there's a bigger picture, that we have a traffic problem, where we have through streets and people use them. And, and we have epiphany, um, the population of the country, the world, or our town is expanding, um, and everybody has cars, so, and we don't have a good solution to mass transit, so, uh, it, it's an issue, and, and, uh, as long as the population keeps, continues to grow, I guess we're going to have to, we're going to have the problem to deal with, unless somebody comes up with a really clever solution, so, yes.
Um, I just would like to take that picture and show the audience. Is that what the...
Absolutely.
So, this is one building, right?
Correct.
So, we're using two buildings. Imagine the project was four buildings like this instead, still a four and a grand, right? So, instead of this, two apiece, we get four apiece. Just an idea.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kristen Craft, and I live at one-eighty-eight Main Street, and I'm a direct butter. And I was, I have a concern that I've heard here tonight, reiterated, and also at the ACHC meeting, and there seems to be a perception in town or on these boards that Route twenty-seven is a busy street, so who cares if we add more traffic? Well, the residents who have young children, who have dogs, who walk the streets, who live in those houses, do care, and I feel like you're doing a disservice to the citizens of this town who live on that street and just saying, "So what?", which is how I feel a lot of the residents do feel. When we had our, um, public interest meeting, there were over twenty neighbor, neighbors who all expressed a concern about the traffic, not just on Main Street, but also the increased traffic that'll be caused on Prospect Street by people trying to avoid a lockjam on Main Street. There's also a great resource in this town, the Discovery Museum, which is directly across from this, what I consider a large development, it might not be in the greater scheme of things, but where it's located is a large development, and we want to keep those people coming and make them feel safe. There's only one sidewalk, a lot of people do park down at Ace, they park at Kmart when they do special events, and they walk, and we'd like to encourage those people, I would assume in this town, to visit that great resource and not to make it a safety concern. Um, and just hope that this board takes into account that there are people who live on that street who have safety concerns. I know it is a busy street, but that doesn't mean that you should add even more traffic. It might be better to think, how do we reduce the traffic for those residents? Thank you.
Yeah, I didn't mean to dismiss, uh, your concerns about the traffic, I just said I, I wanted to just point out that this, we're talking about a housing development of eight units, and there's been a lot of traffic on Route twenty-seven before then, so don't, uh, put the onus of the traffic entirely on the additional, the additional housing. That's all I'm trying to say. There, there are a number of factors contributing to traffic on the road, um, and I'd like to sort of have fair representation of what those factors are, so, thanks.
Chairman, I'm Nancy Tavernier, chairman of the Acton Community Housing Corporation. Um, and thank you, everyone, for bringing such thoughtful comments. Many of these comments were heard at the public information session, and I appreciate the fact that they've been delivered calmly and respectfully. As I always say, when we start one of the, uh, information sessions, nobody wants development next door to them, nobody, I mean, even me, but it's a reality, and it's because we're not at ten percent that we don't have that much choice. One of the things that Acton is luck, lucky, it has done multiple long-range plans, and those can be used, they are used by ACHC to guide the process, they are used by the Board of Selectment and the Planning Board, uh, to also guide the process. We have the Acton twenty-twenty Plan, which supports inclusion and diversity. We have a brand-new housing production plan that was approved by the Selectmen and the Planning Board that lays out, uh, housing needs in the community and projects needs going forward, and we need all, all of the units in here are needed, not just the affordable ones. We have a housing shortage throughout the state. Without another single person moving to the state or another new job being created in this state, we have a shortage of forty-four thousand housing units. So, uh, you know, we take little baby steps one at a time. Often, people have said, "Why don't you just do one big project and be done with it?" Well, that's not what the public wanted when we did these long-range planning exercises. And because we have these long-range plans, and the one that seems to be most helpful to us is the comprehensive permit policy that was adopted by the Selectmen and the Planning Board, and using that, it zeroes in on some of the features of this development and highlights them. Uh, the comprehensive permit policy has preference criteria, and first of all, small-scale, twelve units or less are the type of development that the town, the public who participated in this process, the ACHC, Board of Selectmen and Planning Board, prefer small-scale projects, twelve or fewer units in an infill, infill development. Walkability was a big feature in all three of our long-range plans. This project is a half a mile from the train station. We assume people buying there will be commuters, some of them will be commuters on the rails and certainly can walk, there's no reason for them to drive, and it's also within a half a mile of Kelly's Corner with sidewalks all the way. The home design is consistent with what was selected by the public when they participated in the comprehensive permit policy exercises. These are, uh, they're calling them craftsman style, they're, uh, they are similar. Mark showed at the information session, if you took one of those end units, there are many similar houses along Main Street, just one. I agree, these are four attached, but it's not an outrageous, uh, uh, design. The landscape will be used to, uh, provide visual relief and protection of the adjoining properties, but most of all, we encourage and all, and have used probably ninety percent of the time, the friendly forty-b process, and this has been, uh, an excellent example of how collaboration and cooperation can create a quality project. Uh, Mark and Sotir are experienced developers, they've, Mark has worked on several developments in the town, they're familiar with town staff, they're familiar with the process, they have done everything that we've asked of them, and we have our own guidelines and procedures, and they've followed them. So, there's really, uh, you know, I appreciate that people would like to push out the decision. The next step after this is the zoning board of appeals, and that's when the Selectmen will go through the thought process once again, uh, to determine what their recommendation will be, as well as all the town, relevant town boards and the public. So, I, I thank the board for their foresight over the years and helping to develop these long-range plans, and I want to assure you that this is completely consistent with all of our planning documents. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
Deborah Symes, Concord Road, I'll make this really quick. Um, this is information you guys may not know, but the town is embarking on a process to develop a town-wide sustainability policy, and hopefully a plan will come out of that. We don't know what that exactly will look like yet, but as, and I don't know whether this project will go forward, but this, if it does, uh, someone earlier, in fact, Katie, I think, talked about considering not actually doing natural gas hookups and doing instead aerosolized heat pumps and mini-split systems, which are phenomenally efficient at very cold temperatures, the technology has improved vastly in the last few years. And/or, I'm thinking all the paving, if all these, you know, for this number of units and that number of cars and the extra ten guest spaces, instead of just throwing asphalt down, look at permeable paving. There may be language in this plan that we hope will come to fruition in the next few months, that we'll be pushing hard for folks to do things in that direction rather than the other. Thank you.
We'll certainly be open to those ideas as well.
I would just add a caution, I always do this about permeable paving, I first learned about it when I was Conservation Commission, and, and I also learned that permeable paving becomes impervious if you don't maintain it properly, and it's not appropriate for all sites, so, uh, you know, people, people often grab on to perme, pervious paving as, as sort of the end-all and be-all, very green and all that, but it can be very un-green in the wrong location and if it's not properly maintained, so, um...
Okay, um, I just want to answer what Nancy was saying about the, um, comprehensive permit document planning that was so long ago, um, that people said that if they were in their neighborhoods and if, if, if and if, then they might prefer this, so I, I think we need to be careful about letting that, um, be taken out of context. Also, market demand does not equal public necessity. So, the studies that talked about housing insecure and the drastic need for housing in this state did not include a drastic need for middle-income housing that people were purchasing that were capable of getting a mortgage. It was for people who were disabled, for people who are seriously low-income, that's a public necessity. That's what should get the subsidy to, to override zoning, not something like this that is, um, for basically bringing people who can already afford housing in so many other areas. Uh, we also have done our job locally, uh, in terms of middle-income housing, and, uh, so unless they're going to, I, I think they should slim the project down and include , uh, low-income housing. Uh, a letter, a Board of Selectmen letter now is very difficult to get changes, uh, at the Board of Appeals level, and so I urge you to withhold until we get a design that is not injurious to the neighborhood. We have the time, and I think it's an appropriate, um, action in response to the concerns. Thank you.
Wayne Fredericks, Windsor Ave. I didn't come here to speak to this, I came to speak about the poll, but, a few things have been said here. Uh, first, I appreciate everything that Nancy has done for the town over her probably forty years' career, but when she speaks to the people they've chosen, and we have a process, I think we all know that have been involved, that's a very flawed process, and the people don't pick it, it's scripted, but I don't want to go there. When Tara showed the picture, I thought, "This doesn't fit anything", and it looked to me to be a step in the uglification of Acton. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. Anybody else? All right, folks. What do we, I think we should talk about what we want to do, or are comfortable doing, so...
Um, so I'd say I, I appreciate all the concerns, and, and I agree with them, I live on Main Street right now, so I also, uh, deal, deal with the traffic and, and empathize with adding more traffic to, to Main Street. Um, I, for me, I'm comfortable moving this forward to the next step, only because I know we get another chance, and that's our chance to have more kind of input, and I think we're, the point of this, um, hearing is to, to, you know, before the developers express our concerns, and I think we've done that, and you hear and understand what they are, and I'm strongly encouraging you to, you know, consider the impacts that this will have on traffic, consider some of the green options in particular to, before you get too far in, into, um, design, uh, because that's where then we end up finding people put a lot of money into design and then don't want to go back and, you know, make these changes. And so, before you do anything related to using natural gas or the pervious pavement, look at alternatives, um, very strongly consider them, don't just sort of, you know, cursory look at them, um, and to, to, um, meet with the design review board, again, you know, during, as you're getting closer to, um, doing a, um, more thorough design. So, um, I'm comfortable moving it forward at this point, knowing that we'll comment again when there's, uh, more information and knowing that we've put forward what the kind of current concerns are, um, and, you know, you hear us right now, so, take this under consideration, please, and know that we'll be weighing in again, so I think it would be, you know, behoove you greatly to, um, actually consider and make some of those changes, so that when we get to, um, you know, write our recommendation to, um, the ZBA, you'd want it to be positive, and I think that would include addressing some of the concerns heard tonight.
Ching Sun, John?
Um, I guess I'm in a similar position to Katie, I have no problems moving this forward, um, as is, is this is just a preliminary application. Um, I agree with, uh, sort of, all the concerns that have been raised today, um, you know, as Janet and Katie have said, uh, you know, twenty-seven is a horribly busy street, um, and most of the traffic is not coming from a project like this, but obviously, um, you know, traffic and safety is a concern on twenty-seven. Um, I do think that, um, you know, we're moving forward to address that, um, you know, and I do think that it's important to, um, to, to do that on both ends, uh, both in terms of, uh, you know, moving forward to address existing conditions as well as to understand, um, you know, what, what new, what new development and, and sort of what new conditions might impose on, uh, changes on, on what we see today. Um, I think that, uh, I think that, uh, another major concern is, um, sort of how this will look in the, in the, um, in the neighborhood. Uh, I, I do agree with residents that this building is, as a single building, is in fact, um, relatively large, um, you know, in comparison to existing houses in the area, um, and with two of them next to each other, it will definitely, um, look very different than, than Main Street has historically looked and looks today. Um, I, Tara raised the point of whether or not you could do four individual, um, uh, detached units as opposed to two, uh, which would obviously mitigate the look of this. I don't know, um, uh, you know, the, as far as the feasibility of that's concerned, but I would definitely strongly advise that, uh, the developers look into that and understand, uh, if that's not possible, uh, allow us to understand why that would not be possible, um, and sort of what the, what the goal, what the barriers, um, you know, would be there, uh, to that end, supporting documentation, if any, related to things like financial analysis would be useful. Um, and so, I guess that's... And so I guess that's where I am right now, and those are my comments related.
Joan?
Yeah, I'm not in favor of the proposal as presented. I think it's out of scale with the neighborhood, and would like to see some revisions made, both in height and in density.
Because I understand where this project stands, it's really about the proposed site, and I, as Katie has said, we're going to have a chance to revisit the project when it comes back to the zoning board of appeals, assuming it comes out of the DHCD. I'm comfortable moving forward. The, Mark and Sotir have heard our comments and heard the audience comments about the various current concerns. I myself am concerned, as Ching Sung mentioned, about sort of the scale of the buildings relative to the neighboring houses. And the traffic issue, I think that we will have to address that later, it's just when it's before the zoning board of appeals, because that's when all the details get taken care of, but, and the fact is that the town needs to deal with the bigger issue of what to do about that traffic, because it's, it's really, in parts of town, it's just, it's intolerable, and so, but it's not just, it's not just about your project, as I said earlier. But I think that a lot of the issues that have been raised now are issues that are really appropriate for the zoning board of appeals to deal with at the later stage. Some people will assert that the whole thing is cooked by that time, but I don't, I don't think it is. I think that I'm hoping that the proponents are, have heard all of the comments and are reasonably sensitive to the concerns, which are not based on frivolous ideas, but they're based on real-life concerns. I, you know, I certainly can see myself feeling similarly if I were living in a situation where I was, well, and it's not just development, it is the kind of development. I think that if this were a proposed development of four houses in a different configuration, or, you know, certainly two houses, I think that it's the scale of it that is causing a lot of the alarm, and then the resulting number of cars added to it, but, you know, because I know that, I know that in other neighborhoods, if you have a one-for-one replacement, a lot of times people are really thrilled if you've got a house that's about to collapse on itself, and there's a new house that's much more attractive going up. It enhances the neighborhood, so, but in any event, that's where I'm inclined to go forward with the project and see what happens.
Make a motion to authorize the chair of the board of the selectmen to sign the LIP application for one eighty-four Main Street.
I guess the only question that I would have based on this motion is whether or not it's typical procedure, I'm not familiar with this, the actual procedural aspects of this to include letters and whatnot indicating concerns, or is that typically only done to the ZBA?
That's done when it comes back to the ZBA, that we will have another chance to review the further changes that they've made and make our comments, as well as the public will be, have the chance, as well as all the other boards.
Although I think that I, we have an instance of submitted letters.
To the state.
With our comments, explaining why we supported moving forward with it, but also noting concerns about the project, if there were any, so.
Yeah, I was remembering instances where we had submitted letters to the state.
Usually, usually I'm the one who's drafting them, whoever the chairman is who has to sign it, so it's just.
Usually, well, there's the two, because there's the ones where we do, and we generally do more comments when we're doing it with unfriendly forty Bs, because there's, that's kind of more of our chance then versus when we're doing it with the LIP applications. I think the timing of when we do the letters with the comments as well, but my understanding was this one was more signing the application, and then in the future we do the.
I have, but I have, I know that we've also had a letter going to DHCD, and it's with a friendly forty B so-called, talking, addressing, you know, the pros and the cons.
All right, then I'll make my motion to approve signing the application with a letter noting our concerns and the comments brought up at the hearing, or at the, it's not a hearing, at the public meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay, Katie moves and Ching Sung seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Abstaining. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I, is the board in a position to make a determination on the waiver request as it relates to the appraisal?
Okay. Discussion about the waiver request, does anybody have any strong positions?
I actually, I don't have any reservations about supporting it, based on the fact that there's a provision for it in the rules, the standards, and our own assessor has suggested that the purchase price is a reasonable value, but I don't know what other people think.
Make a motion to approve the waiver request.
Second.
Katie moves, Ching Sung seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining.
Well, thank you very much, we do appreciate the consideration, and as Nancy said, we do appreciate the comments from the neighborhood. We do hear them, we will take time and look at the plans and see what we can do to try to better accommodate the requests and comments, but we do appreciate the respectful relationship so far. Thank you. And thank you for the board for the consideration.
You're dealing with Route twenty-seven and Chapter forty-B. It's not a pretty combination, so, thank you.
Board to vote to approve request for spending approval of Housing Gift Funds, Acton Community Housing Corporation. This is, this is, we have to authorize spending by the Acton Community Housing Corporation. This is a request for fifty thousand dollars for its preliminary design funding for proposed development, which, trying to find the paperwork, which would go on Mass Ave across, kind of across the street from the old high school building. It's proposed by the same developer who did the high school building project, so we're looking at low, the lower income spectrum for affordable, and it would also have elevator service, so it would be designed to have accessible units, so, but this is going to be a project that will take some work, because he has to get, he has, the developer has to get funding from different, from different programs, and sometimes the funding of the programs determines what kind of units he'll offer, but that's what this is about, so. Any, any comments from the board?
I'm not for me.
Does anybody, if nobody has comments or questions, any comments from the audience?
Yes. It's Tara from West Agden.
Yes.
Okay, so I want to make sure that I read this properly. Is this the five thirty-three Mass Ave location across from the, oh, excuse me, four sixty-six across from the junior high school?
It's four thirty-three Mass Ave. It's, there's a house there, and it's across the street, it's across the street from.
Four forty-six, okay.
Four thirty-three.
Oh, four forty-three, okay, yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay.
But it's, yeah, it's across the street from.
Okay, and it's, and this is for one unit?
No, no, they're proposing it's, it would have thirty units.
Thirty units across from the?
Yeah, they're apartments.
Is it, has it already been built, or is it?
No, if you'd go there, you'll see that there's a house.
Sorry, I go by there all the time, and I looked, and there's a house.
There's a house.
Sorry, it's hard for me to imagine thirty units on that site. And so how many of the thirty units are wheelchair?
They're all affordable, because it's for, it's for.
I want to ask my question.
Low, moderate income rental, so.
Are they, how many of them are wheelchair accessible?
All.
This is all?
They're all.
Okay.
Shall I just give an overview?
Yes, give an overview.
Okay. The proposal, it's in the memo.
It's very preliminary, it's probably going to take minimum two years to get the funding put together. This is a nonprofit common ground who's proposing this. They're the same ones who developed the old high school across the street into fifteen affordable units. The proposal at the moment is for thirty one-bedroom apartments in a building with an elevator for seniors sixty-two and older, and everyone will have the benefit of an elevator. Some of the units will be completely accessible. The income served will be from thirty to sixty percent of the area median income, but it's a long ways off, and that's why we need pre-development funds as part of Acton's local share, which we only do with a nonprofit developer.
Okay, so those guys were talking while I was asking.
Can I, Tara, can I just make sure that the board, my board members have no questions or comments?
Oh, yes.
Because typically I defer to the board first. Thank you.
I don't have questions, but I'm supportive of this. I think the old high school project was extremely successful, and this is a lot of the kind of housing that we need, so I think it's a great idea to use some of our ECHC funding for this, so.
Okay, so the thirty units.
Tara, that's just one of my board members. Yes, Joan?
What is the size of the lot?
Nancy, do you know the size, what's the size of the lot? Does it say in here?
The size of the lot?
Yeah.
I think it's, it's point eight, also, yeah.
So is it R2 zoning, or is it, well, it's.
Yeah, I think it is.
It's twenty, it's twenty thousand square feet, so it's small.
Half acre?
Yeah.
Quarter acre?
Point eight, so it's, it's.
Eight acres is, is only the same size as the previous lot.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a shot, yeah, four fifty, yeah. Okay, any, Ching Sung, you have any questions?
No, I don't.
Okay, okay, go ahead, Tara.
Okay, so thirty units total, with how many units wheelchair accessible? We don't know yet.
Well, all if they have an elevator and the doors are wired.
Okay, and.
It's all preliminary.
Right.
Yes, it's very preliminary.
Right.
One bedroom.
One bedroom.
All affordable, serving seniors sixty-two and older, incomes thirty to sixty percent of the area median income, many of the units would be fully accessible, but all would have the benefit of an elevator.
Great. I would urge that in the design discussions that there's at least three or four, maybe even six, that have connecting doors, so that people, we know a lot of people who, they're friends, and they operate as a household, but they're separate family units, and it's really helpful when they can band together as a team, and if they have connecting doors, I've found that that's been really helpful. We've actually cut doors into units.
Who's we?
People that, activists that cut doors into walls to allow disabled people to help each other more easily than going out to hallways and things like that. But anyway, thank you very much, I'm fully in, I think I'm fully in support of that. I would like to see the designs and make sure that it's not injurious in the neighborhood, but I am fully in support of any housing at thirty to sixty percent, although from an environmental perspective, I think we should be buying up the units on two-way instead and rehabbing them. I also would like to know if, since we're in more control of this type of situation, if this would be a great opportunity to do the green renewable energy sources, so, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah?
Danny Factor, eleven Davis Road, and you are correct, this does sound like something very worthy of supporting, and my only comment is that I'd like to see, I realize it can be a challenge as far as funding sources, but I'd like to see as far as the disabled accessible units available to, if you do have a disability, people younger than sixty-two. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
This would be, this would be within the Kelly's Corner.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the request for spending the Housing Gift Funds by the Acton Community Housing Corporation.
Second.
Katie moves and Joan seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? We're done. All right. Stand up, is this going to be?
Should be.
Next item on the agenda, sustainability goals implementation. Katie has been working some folks on developing an outline of this, and maybe you should just take it away.
Sure, so really it's Deborah and Jim that are going to work, and I just show up sometimes and help them out, but, no, as everybody knows, our number one short-term goal is to develop a townwide sustainability policy, and this is something that Green Acton has been kind of working on in general, and the Green Advisory Board has been also interested in as well. So Jim and Deborah and I talked about just a general outline for the process for developing this policy, and I sent that, and it was in the packet, and just, we wanted to kind of get buy-in from the board on this process, and then I think they both have some brief comments as well. But, so the general idea is that it would start with Green Acton developing a rough draft or outline of the policy, and this started with the meeting that they emailed out about on July fifth, that has already taken place, so work is already underway. And then as part of this, they would share this draft with key committees, including Acton twenty-twenty and the Green Advisory Board, both of whom were invited to that initial meeting. I don't know if members of, some members of those boards did attend that, so, kind of getting multiple groups involved in coming out, coming up with this kind of draft or outline of the areas that this policy would cover, based on looking at other towns, other, you know, the schools policy was included in our packet, work that other communities have done, and various resources out there. And then they would update that draft, and then bring a draft to the board of selectmen to sort of review and provide any input or suggestions on. And then at this point, we thought it might make sense to ask, that it would make sense to turn it over to staff to sort of flesh out the policy, you know, based on kind of the draft that's put together, work with council and staff experts, and one of the suggestions was potentially putting together a working group of the town managers, similar to like he had for the energy, what we ended up using with Peregrine Energy for the electrical aggregation, so a sort of a smaller working group of folks that wouldn't have quorum issues and that kind of thing, working with staff to flesh out this policy. And then either as part of that process, or at some point in that process as well, sending that draft out to all boards and committees, just to ask for feedback that could be sent to the staff in that town manager working group to consolidate that and to come up with a more detailed draft, and then bringing that back to the board of selectmen to either hold a public forum that could be separate from one of our regular meetings, or it could be scheduled, you know, as selectmen business or as a hearing during one of our regular meetings to gather more public input on that updated and detailed draft, bring that input back, update the draft based on that, and then, again, at some point, we'll have to discuss whether this is just a vote of the board of selectmen to adopt this policy, or whether we want to bring that to town meeting for a vote. But I think we can, we can work that out as we go through the process. But so that's generally the outline we're suggesting, and just want to make sure people are comfortable with that process in general. And then, you know, again, we want to make sure there's a lot of opportunities for public input, board and committee input, and then as well as staff, staff input and support as well. But a big thank you to Deborah and Jim for sort of kicking this all off and being willing to develop that first initial draft and outline, which is a lot of work, so, that's where we're at.
Well, thank you, thank you very much for putting that together. I, that, it sounds like a very good plan to me, assuming that town staff can clone themselves and create extra people.
themselves and create extra people to, to do the work, but I, given that it's our goal, and our goals typically derive what town, a lot of what town staff ends up doing, it's, we have ourselves to blame. But anyhow, one of the comments that I, I had to discuss the annual goals with the FinCom, and as I said in my, my selectmen's report, they actually really were very appreciative of them, which was interesting, because I thought, well, this is going to be boring to them, because I'm not talking about, well, I did talk a little bit about financial issues indirectly, but one of the suggestions that came up was to make sure you take into consideration economic sustainability. And I think there's a little bit of, in, in the, I guess it's the AB policy, talking about fiscal responsibility, but I think it's, it's the idea, and I've seen this in definitions of sustainability, that's not just focusing on environmental issues, but it's just everything all in a piece, and it happens to implicate the financial aspect as well. So, because I think, I think that sometimes there are people who feel that when you're, when you're doing something that's very environmentally friendly, sometimes you're doing something that is, is costing, it's more costly for some people, you know. People want to be, I'm sure that there's, nobody wants to be environmentally unfriendly, but I think that I, you know, people want to make it sustainable for them financially to be able to be environmentally sustainable. So, I mean, we've gotten some of the, a little bit of that with pay-as-you-throw.
Sure.
But, you know, honestly, I happen to think that that's a fair way to go. I don't want to be subsidizing somebody else's trash.
Yeah, I mean, I think that piece of, you know, the economic impacts of environmental issues as well would be a part of this. I mean, there's, you know, it, it gets complicated, because there's economic impacts of climate change as well. So, you know, I think there's some of those aspects of it, and making it clear what the economic benefits of a lot of the, these sustainability goals would, would be an important and part of this. I think we want to make sure, you know, that this is a sustainability policy. It's not our long-term plan. It's not the replacement for 2020, which we'll be working on it at, you know, a later date as well. That might get into kind of more of these overarching issues, but they're all tied together, so I don't think it will be a lost, but I, I don't think it would be the main focus of the policy per se. But I'll let Deborah and Jim maybe address some of that if they want to.
Oh. I just, I'm used to having people get up to the mic and start talking, you know, so, but thank you for being so courteous. Yes. Mr. Snyder Grant.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'm thrilled that this is a primary goal for the Board of Selectmen this year, to create this policy, and it's, it's your, it's one of your top goals about implementing it over the next few years. So I just wanted to thank you for, you know, stepping up to that, and appreciate that you've, you've opened up a chance for, for Green Acton and other people to, you know, play some role in this. But it's clear to me, and it's clear to us who are working on some of this drafting stuff, that this is going to be your policy. So we're, we're here to help. I'd say on the meeting on July 5th, we had a wonderful brainstorming time. You can think of, you know, thousands of little yellow stickies on a large board. Maybe it wasn't quite thousands, but a lot of yellow stickies. So I don't want to get into any details there. I will say that some things seem to fall below the level of what we might call a policy. They seem more like, you know, really interesting, specific things. There were also some things that kind of seemed to float above what we might call a policy, general background, general approaches to thinking about this issue, including what you alluded to, Katie, the, the, the triple bottom line of sustainability, that if we think of the environment as this, you know, encompassing, you know, everything that we have to, that we live in and are a part of, and then you have maybe a smaller circle that's people inside of that, you know, what, the, the, the questions of fairness and equity between people, and the way that different environmental policies affect people differently. And finally, for any particular organization, the finances. You know, what makes sense in terms of the flow of money to make a policy you take on be, be effective and be able to continue, rather than simply being a sink. So rather than go over any details with you, I guess I would have some questions for you, and I would love to sit down and listen to answers, because I think you guys have not had a chance to talk about this policy as a board since you voted on it in your, in your planning session. So I'd love to give you guys a chance to say a little bit about that. And here's some questions I have. Well, there's that scope question, you know, what did you have in mind? That might be, for example, something as focused as, let's, let's think about climate change. What can we do about that? Or what can we do about our water? Or you may be thinking broadly, more, all, all the environmental crises we're, we're in the middle of right now. And you may or may not be thinking about the, the equity aspects, so the interpersonal aspects of sustainability policy, or the financial impact. So I'm curious to hear about what sort of scope you're looking for. Also, the right level of detail. There was some support at that July 5th meeting for keeping the actual policy very short, memorable, ideally a single page, and include room for a level of detail below that. For example, having the town manager report back to the town and the selectmen each year about, you know, what specific initiatives they've been taking on and how they've been going. The, another question was, what's the span of control you want to think of? I mean, this came up when you talked about the, the, are we still in question earlier today? Do you want us to focus specifically on the things that the board has control over? Should we look more broadly at what can be done in Acton by other agencies and other groups? Should we be looking at Acton's responsibility to be speaking outwards, being a model for the rest of the world, and speaking up about other issues? So I'd love to hear about, you know, what you, what you are each thinking about in terms of what might belong in the policy. And any, any other thoughts you have to help us get something to you. Thank you.
I'd suggest this, because it's pretty late and there's only four of us here, but I'm thinking it might make sense for us to kind of go back and individually think about our answers to those questions. And then maybe at our 7/24 meeting, you know, have a, a little bit more of a discussion to, to give you guys some more direction. But I, those are the kind of, you know, obviously quite important, important questions, but again, it's ten, and we've got, you know, four or five more things going.
I would second that. I was, I was listening to those questions. I thought, you want us to answer those now? I, I need, I need to read up on what exactly sustainability consists of, and that was sort of why I think we were thinking, well, I was thinking that we need a group to sort of work on it, so we can do other things, but yeah. We'd like the concept that it would be an educational process for, for the group and also for us, or maybe more for us than for the group, because we get people who already know about it, so. But yeah, I think that's a good idea to, to put it on the agenda for, we are going to be talking about the Green Advisory Board's proposal at the next meeting, so it could be relevant, assuming we, we don't have much else on the agenda. I have no idea, so anyhow. Yes.
I support everything Jim said. I hope that we dedicate staff to the project of becoming sustainable, defining it and getting there. I hope that every meeting has a section devoted to sustainability, the triple bottom line. I'm glad people are using the phrase. Ah, yes. And question was, did anybody mention tree preservation by law in that meeting? Katie? Yes? Okay. Then I'll skip that part. And just another talk about growth, thirty units, fifty percent buy-down. It costs us two and a quarter million dollars to buy down the units on Two A. Every couple of months, there's one that's a hundred thousand dollars or maybe even less, and they're going for like fifty thousand in auction, I heard. I don't know if that's true or not, but you give us a fund, we'll go buy them, we'll resell them, and you'll get people that actually are housing insecure, which is the greatest thing you can do for us, quote-unquote, sustainability in the income aspect. And because you're using housing that already exists, you aren't inviting yet more carbon footprint into the town. If we do nothing, we have eight hundred more tons per year with the building permits that, that this board currently approves with their carbon, their carbon authority, is what I'm going to call it. And so, thank you. A million dollars a year, one percent of our budget to secure the last thirty to fifty small houses, depending on how you define it. It would save on trees, would save on building materials, as well as actual housing for, actually housing insecure people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Danny Factor eleven Davis Road, I'll be brief. I just want to reiterate, just on the list of questions, the, the staff issue, because it's going to be the most wonderful thing in the world to have a policy, but the question is who's going to be overseeing that we are meeting our goals under the policy? And whether it be staff, whether there be a committee involved, you know, that's some, you know, something else to be thoughtful about. Thank you.
Thank you. So are we...
Okay, yeah, so we'll come back to the next meeting, and then in the meantime, let me know.
With some further discussion?
Yeah, if people have concerns about the general process as well, but otherwise, maybe think about those questions, and we'll talk more on the 24th.
This next item is mine, and I had an email with, and I can't find it. I'm just, I'm sorry. I just, yeah, I'm trying to run the meeting and then, but anyhow, Town Manager Search Committee Charge and Proposed Membership. I have revised the charge, and I attached a redline copy for the board to look at. It reflects the changes since the first charge. A lot of the introduction of more formality is town councils' work, spelling out words rather than using numerals and that sort of thing, and parenthetical definitions of, of terms. I addressed, I think, some other things that, well, I fixed some typos, but then that she had created, this happens when you do redlining, you don't see what the changes are. But then I also addressed the issue of this, some things like assigning code names or numbers to the candidates. And I actually talked with somebody who had been on the last committee about what that meant, how did they use that. And what it is, is that because the only people whose identities become publicly known are the finalists, the way you protect the identities, including in executive session, because at some point those minutes will become public, is you use code names. And it also happens to be a much briefer way of referring to people rather than with their last names. So that's what that's for, and that's what the, the chairman would do. You had a suggestion possibly about, you know, maybe allowing the committee to agree on co-chairman if the chairman were so inclined, but we can, I, you know, I'd be happy to amend the charge, and, but I would like to know, one, if people have other suggestions regarding the charge itself. The second thing I'd like to do is talk about the slate that I, we, we got, I got suggestions from board members. It was about twenty-three different people. There was a fair amount of overlap. People who are engaged in government, have been for a while, tend to show up at the top of the list. And then I did confer with Katie at one point, because a number of her suggestions were people on which, for which other selectmen had also made suggestions. So there was a lot of overlap, and I had my own collection that I decided to check on. We went to check on whether these people, now that we've suggested them, whether they'd actually be willing to serve on this committee, because for some of them, that wasn't, wasn't known. So Katie checked on her list, I checked on the other list, and I will read the list that we have, and we've also confirmed the person who we wanted designated initially as chairman, starting with Pat Clifford, chairman, Marion Ashton, John Benson, Charlie Catholic, Juwan Kong, Steve Noon, Sahana Purwi, Nancy Tavernier, and Mike Gowing. And a number of those people, I think Pat, John, Charlie, and Nancy were on the 2007 search committee, so they're familiar with the process. I was, honestly, I was trying to have some women. I also was trying to have diversity, some representation from the Asian community, and that's, we've achieved that, but that is the proposed slate and for approval, along with sort of charge with any changes that people have.
I'll just say, I think it's a wonderful slate, and thank you to all of those people who are willing. This is not a committee with a light amount of work. This will be a lot of work, and they were all willing to step up and do that, and I thank them very much for that. And Pat, the proposed chairwoman, who has accepted that responsibility, had suggested the idea of potential co-chairman, because that is a large amount of work, and so I think it might be worthwhile to put in here that, in the charge that we would, I have to see what number it's under, but yeah, that we would designate a chair.
Well, we appoint a chairman, and we'll, we'll just give the committee the option of, of appoint...
Appointing a co-chair.
Selecting co-chairs, yeah.
Okay. I think that that change would make sense, and otherwise, I think it's a great and diverse group with a lot of people that are experienced and knowledgeable, and that I think will work really well together and come up with some great options for us. And again, just thank them all for their willingness to, to serve.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm going to have to be in touch with Pat. I mean, I could...
She's in the back, if you need to, so.
Pat, I'll be in touch with you. I have lots of material to share with you, so you can get started, or we can, we can meet and talk, so. But does anybody else have any comments about the charge or the slate?
No, looks good to me.
Okay, well, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve the Town Manager Search Committee Charge with the amendment related to co-chairs, and to approve the proposed slate of members as indicated in the memo in our packet with the addition of Mike Gowing.
Second.
Okay, Katie moves, and, and Joan, and Ching Sung simultaneously second. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Great. Thank you. And thanks to everybody who's agreed to, to serve. Okay. Okay, this, Board to approve and sign a letter of support for CPA funding increase. This pertains, this is a letter going to the state imploring the legislators to authorize funding that will increase the percentage match that participating communities typically get. It started out very high, well over fifty percent, and over the years of participation, as more communities have, have joined, have started to participate in the Community Preservation Act program, the, the percentage match from the state has dropped. And every once in a while, they, they authorize an additional infusion of, of cash to sort of increase the effective match, but I think that, it says here, what is it, the, you're trying to increase it now to thirty-two percent?
Just before you go on, the, the problem is the budget was just approved, so it's, it's too late for this year, because the states approved the FY18 budget.
Oh, really?
We could do a different letter that went to the governor, asking him to, but at that point, you can't really veto the line, add money, so it, it's too, it's unfortunately too late at this point, I think, to send that letter to the chairs of the, of Ways and Means, because they voted their budget last week.
Yeah, all right. Well, I mean, this is going to be an ongoing issue, because...
Yes, it will become a bigger issue, because Boston was joined.
All right, so should we just table that? Does anybody feel inclined to vote? If you want to send a letter, then please volunteer also to write it. Although I guess you could write the, you could adapt the letter that we've got here drafted. Does anybody feel strongly about not tabling this idea? No? Okay. I take the silence as a no. All right. Letter to Governor Baker regarding MBTA Monopole Projects for Manchester by the Seat Board of Selectmen. This is actually not about that particular letter. It's really about the general issue of the monopole project, the placement of monopoles in the MBTA Eastman areas. of the monopole project, the placement of monopoles in the MBTA easement areas, apparently to enhance Wi-Fi service on the commuter trains, but with very little notice or opportunity for communities that are affected by the monopole placement to actually weigh in on them. As I've said to some people, I, in email, we got a request from somebody who had been hired to confer with communities about the impact of historical and other valuable resource, cultural resources of the monopole locations, and we heard from the Historical Commission weighing in on one of the four monopoles, one that's in South, South Acton, near Martin Street, and we sent a letter just embracing their recommendations, and then we, we heard from, I guess, North Shore communities, where there's an effort afoot to try to, among communities who are not only concerned, but I think they are opposed to the monopole placement project, to collaborate and kind of present a united front with regard to, in opposition to the project. So, I, I just, I put this on the agenda so that we could talk about, talk about what, if anything, we need to do beyond what we've already done. There is some sort of meeting, the MBTA Advisory Board or something like that is having a meeting, and some of the people from these communities are planning to go and let their voices be heard, but, and I also have sent, sent emails to our, our state legislative delegation, and I think Jamie Eldridge's assistant responded, said, you know, "Well, thank you," or, "Well, well," you know, it'd be interesting to know if they're hearing from others, but then, and then Cory Atkins actually called me and, last Friday, and I haven't called her back yet, but I will try to find out, because Concord, where, which is the bulk of her district, is apparently one of the towns that is up in arms about the monopole placement, so. I didn't know if anybody had any thoughts, if you think that it's well-formed enough for us to do something, or if you want us to continue exploring what, what it is that we should do.
Yeah, I think, I don't know, it'd be good to have feedback from Representative Atkins about what, what would make the most sense. I don't know if it's sending a letter to the MBTA Control Board prior to their July 17th meeting, you know, expressing our concerns. Again, the Historical Commission mostly brought up the concern about the one in, near Martin Street, and didn't specifically bring up the other ones, but, you know, it, it would be worth it to at least even have a letter expressing our concern with just the general impact on historic, our historic resources, and I think it could be based off of that draft letter that Manchester by the Sea sent us, and perhaps we just send that to the MBTA Control Board, and maybe add our request that they do the balloon tests as well, because that was what we had originally requested in there, because it, it helps to see how far you can see these things from, and I think that's hard for people to visualize without that kind of test.
I have a question for you, since you're the Historical Commission liaison. Did they talk about any, did they look at the other pole locations, including the one on Windsor Ave? Did they just-
Briefly, I don't recall a conversation about the one on Windsor Ave, I recall a conversation about the other one that's up River Street or something, and there wasn't as much concern about that, because I think of how it's set, we, it didn't seem like there would be a problem there. The Martin Street one was the main one. I don't, I don't recall talking about the Windsor Ave one, and it, again, we also, the Historical Commission didn't get these directly, it was only, it was accidentally sent to Historical Society, and it was, you know, whatever, so they got these pretty late and didn't, I don't know, they at least got those two, and I'm not sure if they got the third one on Windsor Ave, so I don't, I don't recall. I think they, they have a meeting on Wednesday night, and I believe I saw that on their agenda, so I should, barring anything, should be there on Wednesday night as well, and can also encourage them to perhaps write a letter, if that's something we think-
Well, I think I, I heard some, or read, I didn't hear anything, I read, read concerns that the Historical Commission didn't even address Windsor Ave.
Yeah.
Even, I, so-
They didn't, I, I don't think there was a real thorough review of it, because again, the info was few and far between, and kind of-
We, we barely had time to get it on our agenda, so, okay.
When does this 30-day hold start and run to?
I'm trying to remember, because I-
Yeah, I just, I don't know. I don't remember.
But it sounds like the next thing is that they're discussing this issue for the entire project at the MBTA's meeting on July 17th, so I think this, these folks that mainly Manchester by the Sea, that has been contacting us, is suggesting sort of action for that meeting.
Yeah, that, the hold is so that there can be this full-blown discussion, I guess that's the hope at that meeting. All right. Any other thoughts from the board before I open it up to the audience? No? Yes, Mr. Fredericks?
Okay. Wayne Fredericks, Windsor Ave. Listening to the chatter, it appears that it's fairly contentious of what's going on with these poles. Is it safe to ask the board to send a letter to the governor, similar to what other cities have done, asking for more review and some neighborhood outreach? Katie, you said you weren't sure if there was one on Windsor Ave, there is, it's right behind the Roberts' house.
No, there is one, I just wasn't sure if, what, if the Historical Commission had had the opportunity to review that one or not. I know they didn't include in their comments.
Yeah, I'm not sure either, if they've had a chance to review it, but those of us that live on Windsor Ave are concerned over the fact that we've got a very beautiful street, and now we're going to, somebody's going to come along and put a big pimple on it, which is not something that we want to be looking at, if in fact, it's visible. So, it'd be nice to see if, what the extension, how high it would be, and whether it'd be visible or not. Going back another step, I'm glad we got Mark here, because he's our IT expert. I'm not sure why the MBTA feels that they should have free Wi-Fi. You know, anybody can use their data, they can do a mobile hotspot, they can do all kinds of things. The technology today is to the, where you don't need to do Wi-Fi with poles, do you? Mark, Mark's our expert, so.
You, you don't have to get permission, well, you, maybe technically, I, go ahead. Everybody else talks whenever, so go ahead.
I just think a town meeting, so I just always defer. As far as I know, I don't ride the train very often, but they have some type of cellular antennas on the cars, and I think that rolls in and out of service ranges. I, from what I've been on, I think when you get into Lincoln, you lose complete coverage, and, you know, so I think that they're trying to make a consistent field of Wi-Fi signal along the route. Yeah, a lot of people's devices do have cellular internet, but I think that they're probably trying, like, this iPad doesn't have cellular coverage on it, so for people that have-
Right, but you could do it with your smartphone, and you could, Wi-Fi from your headphone is a hotspot, so I mean, anybody can do it now.
Yeah, there's an affordability issue as well. I mean, they, they, so they currently, I ride the train, they have Wi-Fi on it, it's not, I never use the Wi-Fi, it's not existed.
Yeah, but data packages are cheap. I'm just thinking that maybe there's a technology, you don't need a pole, from what I know, I don't really think, I mean, it's nice to have the poles, it makes it easier from a transition standpoint, but you don't absolutely have to. So, I'd like to, you know, if we have an opportunity, is to query the MBTA and find out, you know, why they're doing it this way. With the current technology, there's really no need for that. Five years ago, yeah, but now, 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 you really don't have to do that. So, speaking from a resident on Windsor Ave, my main concern is visibility. And we've got a beautiful street, and I'd hate to see it ruined, so I would appreciate anything you guys can do, including maybe sending a letter to the governor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Larry Roberts, 44 Windsor Avenue. I'm here with my wife Krista, who is sitting over there. I, I think I beat the fellow over here, I've lived in that house for 67 years, and Krista's lived with me there for 49 years, and she has spent the last, well, after kids, probably the last 40 years, beautifying the backyard with a garden, that is a lovely living space. There is a question whether you would be able to see this pole from Windsor Ave, there's no question whether you can see it from our backyard. And I would urge, as Wayne did, that the board do anything it can to make our concerns known, either directly to the MBTA, or to the governor, or both, preferably both. And this 30, you know, we're obviously concerned about this 30-day hold, that we get whatever our comments are in before that 30-day old hold expires. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Bob Miller, 84 Windsor Avenue. I guess I would like to echo Mr. Roberts, Mr. Fredericks' concerns, but what, the bottom line is, I think a letter to the governor, to the MBTA, on behalf of the town is in order. Specifically, although I would sort of echo, I wonder why they need Wi-Fi, but I don't think we're going to have a success in arguing that issue. Rather, I think the argument should be, what's the appropriate process? I don't think the process has been put in place here that communicates to a butters. I mean, I think Windsor Ave became aware of it, because I saw a news article on Channel 7 or Channel 4, and I then communicated to the street, communicated to the board, communicated to our congressional delegation as well. And I was surprised that Martin Street received generous support from the Historical Commission, while we have multiple Historical Commissions overseeing everything that goes on in Historic District and West Acton, that this one was missed. Again, on a butter review, I think a flag, or a balloon test of all locations is in order, a notification to those people along those locations that a balloon test is being conducted, and some discussion about other options. I mean, quite frankly, I live on Windsor Ave, I live farther down the street, not in the Historic District, and I have about an acre of wetlands between myself and the railroad, and although I caution this, because the people on Kinnsley Ave, on the other side of the railroad, may have a different view, it's probably at 70 feet, probably easier to put it in my wetlands, in the, in the trees, rather than in the middle of the Historic District, in the backyard of Mr. Roberts' house. But again, there's been no process by the MBTA to look at reasonable locations and options, rather than just plugging it in, because they must, some engineer someplace, that we need it so many feet apart, and that's where we're going to put it. So, I think that, if anything, that's the most reasonable thing to do, is pursue a better process, and look for better locations. And I don't know if we really need 70 feet as well, what their coverage requirements are, so revisiting the scientific requirements for the height and location might be as well. Maybe they could get away with 40-foot poles a little more frequently, rather than 70-foot, but we don't know those details without asking. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, well, it sounds as if somebody has to draw, put together a letter.
I can draft a letter, based on the, if people are okay with it, I'll base it on the Manchester by the Sea letter, and the letter that we already sent, requesting the balloon test, but adding in the Windsor Ave one, or, or all of them, I think.
Okay, I mean, why don't you, if you're willing, if you have time to take a crack at that, would you, and then I'd be happy to work, work with you on it, and just, because that's my thing, it's just that I've got something else I have to draft, too, so.
Yes, I would do that.
All right, thank you, thank you. Well, so, we are going to put together some sort of correspondence.
Thank you. I just, in a point of information, you said that there was going to be an MBTA meeting. Is that an open meeting where people could attend?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it's a meeting of their Control Board, I don't have the details, but you can probably go on their website, and it's July 17th, and those are public meetings that anybody can attend, and this note that we had received from, to Selectmen in Manchester by the Sea, and they were encouraging people to attend, and I think a number of them will be, so.
Okay, thank you very much. 17.
Send it up, all right. All right. Now, "Approve final RAC charge." Somewhere in this packet. I just, I'm having, I, I just, I'm playing with the papers, and I'm- No, no, but I, what I did was, I, I, it's mostly, it's essentially the same, except that I, I modified the membership requirements to make them a little bit more flexible, frankly. I, first, I made it clear that a representative of the Acton Water District has to be a member, and then I have individuals with training experience, or a demon, and/or demonstrated interest in water resource systems, including without limitation, and then I list all these things, and then add related disciplines, whatever that means, and, but, you know, I was trying to add, you know, add the, sort of, the credentials to make, add some rigor, but at the same time, I wanted to be flexible enough to allow people who, who have a serious, it could be avocational, interest in the issue to join, so. But if nobody has any other suggestions, I would like to approve this.
Make a motion to approve the RAC charge.
So, Katie moves, and Joan seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. And Joan, you are now, you're, you take over. Yeah, they, well, now what happens is, Mr. Aronson, Aronson is going to get, you get this charge, and you start plugging holes with, you start maybe advertising for RAC members. Right? And then, and then, you know, looking at the credentials, I mean, you could just list them, but if it's easier, and then just see who applies. And, and you probably are, you may already have some applications, but, you know, I know you've been sort of waiting for the official word on who's, what, what we want the, the committee to do, and who, who's going to be on it, so, there, because there are some, there are some gaps. I think that we have three, including somebody who represents the Water District, and you really need to have two, two more, and, yeah, two more plus associates, so. Never-ending. All right. Consent agenda, committee appointment, item 11, committee appointment, Emily Ying, Open Space and Recreation Committee Planning Board representative. Item 12, refund request, Building Department, a refund of $107 requested by Solar City. Item 13, one-day alcoholic beverage license, Andrew Dusset, NARA, August 19, 2017. Item 14, one-day alcoholic beverage license, David Weaver, NARA, September 16, 2017. Item 15, one-day alcoholic beverage license, Lauren Noonan, NARA, July 23, 2017. Item 16, one-day alcoholic beverage license, Ron Lipinski, NARA, NARA, July 30, 2017, one day. Item 17, one-day alcoholic beverage license, Camilla Milagre Fontaja, wow, that's a great name, NARA, August 26, 2017. Item 18, multiple one-day alcoholic beverage licenses, Boston Events, NARA, August 3, 10, 17, 2017. Item 19, accept gifts, council on aging, multiple gifts totaling $1,690 to be utilized for building furnishings at the New Senior Center located at 30 Sudbury Road. Item 20, accept gifts, Recreation Department, multiple gifts totaling $1,700 to be used for funding a new recreation facility and playground at Jones Field. Item 21, accept gift Planning Department, a gift donation totaling $5,000 from Insulate Corporation in lieu of the Sidewalk Fund. Item 22, committee appointment, Raul Smith, Associate Member, Historical Commission. Item 23, committee appointment, Dr. Thomas Jacoby, Associate Member, Board of Health. And item 24, request to dispose of obsolete materials, Acton Memorial Library.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Katie moves, Joan seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. You have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, wait a minute, you've got to make sure, don't leave everybody before you sign, I haven't signed these things.
You want to, I made a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Do you want to do a vote, Janet?
What? Oh, okay, motion to adjourn, so, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Okay. Oh, what am I supposed to?